Families and adjustment of the program through the school year. We would love to see these rolled up to a new educational model reflecting the needs of this millennium. We are very concerned that the current focus on structures will take us backward to a place where we cannot reimagine what is needed for the future. We encourage you to use something like what we outlined here as a framework or something like it as you approach the next year to move the district forward. Understand, this is a kind of a big change in where the current conversation is, but any progress toward this would be very beneficial, we feel. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jake. Nadia. Pam, you might need to unmute people.
Okay, let me see if I can find Nadia.
There now, I think.
She should be, she should be able to do it.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes. Yep. Great. So this is Nadia Wetzler, and I have three children going into second, fifth, and ninth grades. I'd like to understand first on what basis it was deemed impossible to have in-school learning in full, in particular for the younger children. Our experience last spring was that in particular for our youngest, but frankly for all three kids, the remote learning was not sufficient and did not meet their academic or developmental needs. In addition, during the last meeting that I attended, several people suggested considering outdoor learning as a possibility, at least during the initial months. And I'd like to know if the school board has considered that. Okay, we're not taking questions at this time, Nadia, but thank you so much for your comments. Do you have anything else you'd like to say? No, other than I would like to see that addressed because to date I have not seen that addressed in any way by the school. Okay, thank you. Sophia.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. So my name is Sophia Johansson. I have three children, two of whom are served in the district, one of whom attends a Chapter 766-funded special education placement, and the other is going into first grade. And first, I just want to say thank you to everybody on the school committee and in the administration and throughout the district, as well as all of the families that are here this evening. I think that it has taken a tremendous amount of work and effort to get to this point. And it's also one of those times where I am very grateful that I am not in a position to have to make any of these decisions. So I'm very grateful for all of the hard work that everybody here has been putting in. And I think that, yeah, I just hope that you guys are all getting the acknowledgement that you deserve. Because I have to say that Manchester Essex Regional School District has done a fabulous job in comparison to a lot of other districts engaging their students and coming up with a really robust remote learning curriculum. And I think it's also fair that we should actually probably call it crisis education. So thank you to everybody that's been involved in that. One thing that I just wanted to share, we were very, very lucky to, for our child who does attend a special education placement out of district, we were really lucky to be able to leverage some of the resources in district over the summer to supplement his very, very slim schedule. And I will say that I really want to just raise and express a lot of compassion for the families whose students are in district and receiving intensive special education services, whatever that looks like. Because I can, I just want to, I just want to really try to shed light on how I know that we're all struggling and I know that we are all doing the best we can to keep up with a tremendous amount of work in wearing probably about five different hats at any different, at any given time throughout the day, particularly those of us who are working and teaching our kids at the same time. But I just want to really express compassion for the families that are trying to do the job that, you know, might have five different people on their school teams and are having to do this at home. I found that, you know, our experience receiving in-district remote special education services was wonderful, and it was so much work. And I did not, and I don't think that I would have asked to augment what we had already, what my son was already getting if I had known how challenging it would be. That being said, I still.
Sophia, it's Shannon. I'm sorry. I'm just trying to keep everybody on, on, on time. You're kind of at the three-minute mark. Thank you so much for your comments. We really appreciate them because this is an unenviable position. So if you would wrap it up, that would be great because I know there are other people who want to talk.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't realize the time. I just really want to send it out there because I think that, you know, again, we're all struggling, but I really do think that this district needs to consider other things that can augment high-need students and expand the definition of high-need students to students who did not engage in any remote learning at all throughout the spring because of whatever reason, whether it was technology or anxiety or just no interest in the screen.
Great. Thank you so much, Sophia, for sharing all those thoughts. And thank you to everybody who's shared so far. Tamar, you're up next.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to share a couple of thoughts, thoughts and comments. Number one, that as a parent, I fully, fully, fully support a robust hybrid start to our year. I kind of think of it as like the phased approach that we slowly phased into opening the state of Massachusetts. I hope that we can slowly phase into reopening our schools. And I think that starting hybrid is a great way to do it, to get our feet wet with how to do it. Number two, from a science perspective, there's more data on kids, kids getting a kid spreading it. And I believe that the recent data was age 10 and under, they literally don't have as many ACE2 receptors. So their ability to get it and spread it is lower. So I think age 10 and up, they're more like adults. So I do think that a fully remote high school plan makes sense from a risk and a spreading perspective, but also their ability to do higher-level learning. Whereas with our little kids, they need the in-person attention and cohorting works for kids of that age. And lastly, I want to thank all of our teachers. I think that at this point in time, your abilities, your skills, your wisdom, how wonderful you are with our children is very highlighted because of what we've experienced trying to teach them, that you guys, your years of educational experience and what you've learned, it makes a huge difference, and our kids need you. And I'm more than welcome, more than willing to help out in any way I can as a physician in the community and as a parent. I think that's it.
Thank you, Tamar. Jeff. Pam, can we find Jeff? Does he need to be unmuted?
Jeff, if you can hit your unmute button, that would be great. I'm going to search you out. Otherwise.
He's trying to get on.
Okay.
Right. Is there anybody else who, while we wait for Jeff? Is there anybody else in the, no, my chat won't open. Yes. Can, while Jeff tries to connect, can we hear from Rebecca and then we'll come back to Jeff?
Yep, Jeff's mic looks open on this end.
Jeff, can you, can we hear you now? I think he's having a connection problem. So we'll come back if we can hear from Rebecca. Rebecca, I'm sorry. I think you have a very, very bad connection and we can't hear you. Yes, you have a error message next to your icon. Jeff, are you able to talk? Okay, now, how about Mrs. McWherter?
Hi there. Thank you so much. I just wanted to, so the comment earlier, which I think was really wonderful about, I think it was Mr. Foster's comment about, you know, really wanting to have robust curriculum in terms of this, in the fall, if we are remote. And I just wanted to just, because I'm not sure how many parents are aware of like the limitations that were put on teachers by DUSI in the spring about teaching new curriculum and, you know, the need for really slowing down and not putting pressure on students as we were starting the pandemic. And so I just want to say for, I think, a lot of teachers out there that it will look very different in the fall than it looked in the spring. I think we've learned a lot since then. And teachers have been preparing all summer in terms of learning about new technologies and new curriculum, ideas for, you know, being able to do either a hybrid or remote model that really meets the needs of students. So a lot to look forward to, parents, in terms of that, because your teachers are prepared and ready for that.
Thank you, thank you. And, oh, okay. Rebecca says she wanted to offer the board an understanding of the quality of the program we can offer in a hybrid classroom. And Jeff, I think, is typing because he's having trouble connecting. So we actually.
May I try again? I switched my network.
Yes.
I'm not, that's better.
Can hear you now.
Okay, great. Tweet a little power outage from this room here. So I just want to paint a picture for the board and for parents who are considering the hybrid model and how there's going to be significant limitations on the quality of the education we're going to be able to give our students. Trying to operate a Zoom situation and manage the classroom at the same time, the inability to build quality relationships with our students is going to be inhibited. And so as we're considering that model, I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that it's not going to be the same as we're all expecting from our schools and for that to be something that we weigh heavily when considering whether or not to make the investment in developing that program.
Thank you, Rebecca. Rebecca, there's, you teach at the middle school, yes?
At the middle school, yeah. I'm the sixth-grade English teacher.
Okay. And Jeff actually submitted an email to the committee, so I'm not seeing his remarks in the comments, but we do have his email. And I'm just going to go ahead and go into my chairman's report now, just in the interest of time, because I know this meeting is going to go really, oh, there's Jeff. Okay, I'll read Jeff's and then I'm going to do my chairman's report. Jeff says, "I feel that the remote learning that MERSV provided my fourth-grade and eighth-grade students was inadequate and did not meet their academic and social emotional needs. I'm extremely dismayed that they could be facing this again. Many districts have figured out how to bring children into the building using a hybrid model." Okay. So Jeff, thank you for typing in your comments. Thank you, everybody, for bringing your comments. So we are actually going to turn off the chat at this point now. We've heard the, had our public comment session. And just to give everybody a chance to really focus on what our presenters are saying tonight, we are going to turn off the chat. But I did want to welcome everybody and thank you for coming to be with us tonight. And I have a few things to say. We do want to, all of us, really, we want to get back to a sense of normalcy. And we know that. We're all there with you. And we all want the best for our students, whether we're here as teachers or parents. Please remember to be patient and kind and respectful when you are engaging with each other over these issues, whether you're in person or online or with your friends or with strangers. Everybody's voices deserve to be heard and respected. We on the school committee have been hearing from you in emails and phone calls and letters and on the sidewalk and during our morning runs, as well as in school committee meetings and through our virtual town halls. We know that there are a lot of questions and a lot of strong feelings around returning to learning and a lot of concerns about protecting the health of our communities. The advisory group has been meeting regularly. This team is comprised of principals, directors, school committee members, parent representatives from each school, the presidents of the teachers association, and representatives from the Department of Health. The advisory group assists in the development of a plan that includes provisions for in-person, hybrid, and remote learning. The group is working collaboratively to assess the feasibility of ideas, solve problems, and gather feedback. The advisory group has received a lot of input, including a letter signed by over 30 people calling for a focus on a strong hybrid model which incorporates in-school learning. So tonight, we are going to hear from our high school and middle school principals to share more information on the hybrid model and what it could look like. And none of us have all the answers. We're all still in a process, and we are receiving new information daily that affects our decision-making. As frustrating as it may be, we are facing an evolving situation. We are all in this together, and we want to do everything we can to ensure that the students and teachers and everyone in our community stay safe and healthy while providing the high-quality education that we have all come to expect. So with that, I don't believe we have a student report unless I'm mistaken. I believe he's off for the summer. And we are just going to move on through our business portion of our meeting. So we have the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Birdman's second.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, discussion?
Yeah, I sent a couple of edits to Gail. She's going to incorporate those. That's, that's it. So with corrections, I guess.
All right. All in favor of accepting the consent agenda with a few changes to the minutes by Annie? We have to, by roll call. So Eric.
Yes.
Annie.
Cameron, yes.
Shannon. Birdman, yes. I also sent corrections to Gail.
Matt, I believe Matt is in a different meeting for work, but he's going to pop back into this meeting when he's done meeting at his other meeting. Ken? Ken, are you on? Teresa? Yes.
That was a Warnock, yes. Double muted.
Very much. And I'm a yes. All right, great. We're done with the consent agenda. Subcommittee reports. There's the elementary facilities report.
We had a tour, school building committee members had a tour of the building, the new classroom wing where Memorial School. It's beautiful. And I think it's almost ready. Steve Quitek was there. It sounds like the technology is being installed. And they're cleaning things up and trying to figure out how you configure furniture under these conditions. So there's a lot of work happening in the building. I think it will be ready, and Pam and Abby, correct me if I'm wrong, but it will be ready on time for whatever we decide to do with it. And I would love for us to get school committee members in there, if it's possible, because they have also spent a lot of time supporting this project and should see what it looks like. But it's really great, and I think people should be very proud of the work that we've done as a community to get that addressed.
Awesome. Thank you, Annie. It looks like the finance committee doesn't have a report, but the policy committee has a report. So either Eric or Teresa?
Hi, everyone. Yep, this is Eric. So we did meet last week on Tuesday to discuss a couple policies for if and when the kids are back in school. One was with regard to a masking policy, and the other was transportation. So under the masking policy, we asked a few different questions and had discussion. The first was who's required to wear masks. The state guidance says that those who are 2 through 12 are required. We did a little bit of research and aligned with best practice. We're actually going to recommend that all students 3K through 12 are required to wear them. There would be exceptions that fall under that, students who have a documented medical or disability exception. This would be verified in collaboration with both family physicians and student services. We talked about the types of masks that would be suitable for schools. They would have to cover the nose and mouth while being secure under the chin. They must be made with at least two layers of breathable material, must fit snugly but comfortably against the side of the face with ties or ear loops, neck gaiters, which I actually happen to be wearing right now, open-chin bandanas or face covering that have valves, mesh material, or any type of wool would meet the suitable mask criteria. We discussed supply. We would ask that families provide their students with two or more clean masks that meet that criteria just mentioned per day. If a student or staff member doesn't have a face covering or mask, he or she would be provided with one by the school. And then finally, mask breaks. Schools would be providing mask breaks throughout the day and accommodate the six-foot social distancing criteria that's been established. One last note on the mask policy is that there are some questions that we're still working through, like a process for determining appropriateness of masks and a process for handling issues of compliance. So we'll be there again to talk about those things. Transportation, we didn't get as far in that discussion, but we did move with the existing policy and talk about some of the challenges and potential solutions to meet the needs of the students' families. We'll need to discuss this one further in our next.
Thank you so much, Eric. And that's it for subcommittee reports. The negotiation team also has not met. So I think we are on to you, Pam. Julie, who's going next?
Hi, everyone. It's Julie. I'm sure Pam is here. Do you want me to go first, Pam?
I've been on this thing all day. I'm talking away to myself in an empty room. I was on mute. Yes, you are next on the agenda, and I think you want to start with the literacy piece. So I will pull up your slide deck for that, and I'm happy to drive. Just let me know when you need a slide change.
Okay, great. Hello, everyone. I think I have three different presentations tonight, so I will try to be brief. I know that we have a middle school presentation and a high school presentation also. So with that said, what I'm going to be talking about tonight is a summary of the work that's been done over the last year on our literacy review. I'd like to introduce Dr. Darcy Burns, who is the executive director for the Hill for Literacy, who's helped us facilitate this year-long review.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So we can move ahead with the next slide.
So I'm going to do a quick review. Do you want me to start, Julie, or do you want to say something first?
No, go right ahead.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I think I presented to you around this time last year. So I'm just going to do a quick review of what we have conducted in the district thus far. Just a reminder, we're Hill, I'm from the executive director of Hill for Literacy, and we're a nonprofit organization that partners with districts throughout New England and other places to implement school-wide literacy models. So we started our partnership in Manchester, Essex, two years ago with, conducting a comprehensive needs assessment and then continued to work with the district this year around some action steps related to the outcome of the needs assessment. So just to review the needs assessment process, we conducted focus group interviews with all staff in both elementaries and then also with sixth grade and the middle school. We conducted a survey to gauge, asking participants to rate where the school is in certain components of a school-wide literacy model using the PET-R survey. It was developed at the University of Oregon. And then we collected also some inventory surveys from all teachers around programs, materials, and resources that they were using to teach literacy, assessments to measure literacy skills, and then also a history of the training and professional development that they received. And then we compiled all that data and we reported it out to the leadership team, the district leadership team, and then the district leadership team developed a district literacy plan. And then we spent this past year implementing some of the, like I said, the components in the plan. Yeah, you can go to the next slide. So just to recap, some of the information that we gathered from the needs assessment, that there were 158 different assessments reported by the teachers being used to measure literacy. Those assessments included universal screeners, progress monitoring tools, and some diagnostic schools. There were different assessments being used across the schools and also many program-related assessments were reported. And then from the program survey, there were 285 different programs, resources, and materials reported as being used to teach different literacy across the, across the schools. Those included various programs, resources, and materials. What also was clear through the program survey is that there was a lack of consistency of the use of these programs, resources, and materials within schools across grade levels and across the schools. And there was also some inconsistent naming of materials and assessments. And that was one of the first things that we actually worked on cleaning up together. We conducted interviews and we asking some open-ended questions about what the staff considered to be strengths and weaknesses of the current literacy instruction. And so we reported out trends in those, in those interviews across all the components. But for tonight's purposes, I'm just going to highlight, if you want to go to the next slide, highlight the comments made regarding the use of programs, materials, and resources, which is the next slide. Oh, the next one, sorry. All right. So some of the kind of key themes that came out of this particular topic. One, it was one of the most, it was the area or the component that had some of the most comments made, which is typical of a needs assessment, that people talk about the programs, resources, and materials that they're using. So some of the strengths were that there are multiple texts for instruction, both nonfiction and fiction, leveled libraries, read aloud books, independent reading books, and then also the flexibility around the use of all of the materials and the freedom to be able to use these materials, you know, the way that they want in the classroom. However, the flip side of that, there were many comments regarding the need around specific instruction, around writing, consistent instruction around grammar, spelling instruction, that there was a lack of a scope and sequence or even a consistent approach to teaching spelling. And then the need for a consistent curriculum K to five that would serve as a roadmap for teaching reading and writing, create a consistent approach across the school and within schools and across schools. And then the other topic area that really relates to kind of goals, objectives, and priorities of instruction. Again, it was articulated, just the lack of consistency within and across grade levels, the need for something that carries from one grade to the other, consistency across schools, and which would also enable there to be more consistency between regular education and special education. So we, so a couple of things that we worked on as a result of this needs assessment is we worked together with a leadership team to build an assessment framework and so that we're in a position to identify where there's gaps and redundancies in the assessments used and make some decisions around those. And then also what we did around programs, resources, and materials. An action step in the literacy plan was to, was to take the existing programs, resources, and materials collected in the needs assessment and build a program framework. So we had the leadership team work on that. While simultaneously, another action step in the literacy plan was to do a core program review so that staff could, because it had been a long time since staff had had an opportunity to look at what core programs, comprehensive programs are available on the market. So we selected two programs to review. One, Wonders, published by McGraw-Hill, which is a typical core reading program. And then we also looked at My View Literacy, which is a more newer program published by Pearson that has really, yeah. So we walked, so the. yeah, so we walked, so the the staff started that process, and then due to COVID-19 shutdown, we had to shift and do things a little bit different with ensuring the fact that all staff could have access to both programs, access to the publisher providing information about those programs. And then Julie and others sent out a survey to collect additional information from staff around their response to the core program review, which Julie will share now.
Thank you, Darcy. So just to kind of close up, you know, the conversation around this, what we ended up with after calling all that data and talking it through and trying to get an assessment on where to go with regard to the different programs that we were looking at, we came down to the final decision to recommend Wonders 2020 for the district adoption. There were so many components of it that we felt fit the scope of where we wanted to go with options to help stay within the readers and writers workshop model format, but to offer more of a grade level scope and sequence that aligned to the standards, but also horizontally and vertically. We also have the capacity to tap into over 14,000 authentic texts, both virtually and in person, if you will. We have the capacity to connect with 2,800 leveled readers, which will help us to support all different levels of reading across the different grade levels. And we're happy that these units are written in the Understanding by Design format, which is where we're expecting to go with our curriculum and our revision process. And we're happy that we have the ability to address the foundational skills at many different levels, across many different grade levels, with all of these different tools and resources and assessments that are available to us within this program. The system is also aligned to everyday math, so it's the same structural components that we're used to with instruction on the math side. So there isn't a heavy learning curve in terms of how to manage collecting information and kind of supporting students through the process. We also love the fact that it has a social and emotional component, which helps us to build a lot of the work in together that we've been doing with the Yale Group for for Ruler. And we're happy that it also has a strong emphasis on anti-racism and anti-bias within the curriculum structure as well. It does also address all the components that we are concerned about, the vocabulary, grammar, spelling, handwriting, cross-content connections, students' abilities to do small group work across content, but also in projects. So we're looking to help support our project-based learning ideas. And so we feel that, you know, given all of those circumstances and where we are today with our looking ahead to next year, this seems to fit our goals and expectations for where we want to be. And I think the next slide just talks a little about professional development, and that's just a summary of Wonders 2020 has some national commendations as well. It meets all the expectations through ed reports for curriculum review, evaluation, organization, and all the text complexity goals that we have across grade level and across content, building knowledge in the usability scales were very highly rated as well. The technology overview, I could just talk about that briefly. You can stay on the other slide, the PD slide. But the technology capacity is similar and exactly in line with everyday math. So we have the capacity to be in-school and remote with this program, which I think it will help facilitate some of the concerns that we had had around being able to offer the deep level of content and availability of text to students. You can go to the next slide. And so what we're looking at is a two-year kind of rollout in terms of professional development. So the first year will be understanding, you know, the concepts as a whole, and then delving deeper into, in the second year, delving deeper into, and hopefully at that point, we will be dealing with the COVID issue. And so we'll have more capacity to delve a little bit deeper into some grade level work that we were looking to expand on across project-based learning, cross-content work, and things of that nature. I'm sorry to go so quickly. I just know that we have a lot on the agenda tonight. So with that, I will close and just thank you to everyone for listening. I know that was probably a long, a long talk. And if you have any questions, Sarah, I'm happy to answer them.
Julie, that was a great presentation, and I know you've just been working on this for, it seems like, years. Has it been years?
Years, yeah.
So thank you so much. Does the school committee have any questions or comments for Julie? Annie is raising her hand.
Hi, Julie. I wondered if you could answer two questions. Who's working, who's using this now that you know, and what kind of feedback have you gotten from them? And I wonder if anybody who was on the literacy committee with you, who people might be familiar with from the elementary schools, might want to talk about their impressions of this and how they see themselves working with it.
So I can talk to the across the state. There's an across-the-state network of districts that are using Wonders 2020. And so I reached out to the Department of Ed to find out if we could join the upcoming network, and that network will allow us to work with other districts to look at scope and sequence and the, you know, supports available and help us to kind of build ideas off of each other. So it'll be kind of a continuous working group for the next two years to help us, you know, kind of bridge the gap in terms of moving forward. So we're happy about that offer. That's it.
Are there any folks that were on the literacy task force with you that are on the line that can? I mean, I'm assuming that you all made this decision together and just wanted someone to speak to that.
We did. When we went through our district literacy team approach, we did discuss the different components and came to a consensus to move forward with that. If anyone wants to jump in, they're certainly welcome to do that.
I know we have a lot of teachers on the line tonight. I don't know if anybody from your group is here.
I actually don't know. I didn't get a chance to look at the groups, so I apologize if I can't.
Well, we wait to hear if anybody else wants to jump in. Are there any other school committee comments or questions? Teresa, did you have your hand up? Teresa?
Yeah, it's actually, Annie covered most of it, but my last question is, in case we don't get anyone, was this a universal decision? I mean, was this pretty pretty much everybody was on board on the literacy team?
Yeah, well, on our literacy team, we went through, discussed it. We did a voting survey. So we came to consensus with the group. So we had, yes, we had worked through that process as the district literacy team.
Hey, Julie. Shannon, I have a quick question. You might have covered this, but I had to bounce out for just a second. Is this something that you guys can tee up and start, whether we are remote or hybrid or however we move forward this fall?
Yes.
Okay, it has a remote component?
It's fully digital. So it's fully digital, and we have materials for in-class work as well. So we can go in either direction at any time, which we didn't realize at that point would be as important as it is right now, obviously. Thank you, everyone. I'll be back in a couple of minutes with a remote learning presentation.
Any other school committee questions?
Do you need us to vote to adopt this tonight?
So, well, yes, I would like that because what I'm trying to do here is also create a system within the district to help us get to kind of finalizing the projects that we work on around curriculum and instruction. So that'd be helpful if we could move forward with that vote, and then that'll give us, you know, more structure moving forward for other content areas that we'll be looking at in the future.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the adoption of the Wonders literacy curriculum? For, is it K to five or K to six, Julie?
It's K to five.
For grades K to five?
So moved. Birdman.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Then I'm going to do the roll call vote. Eric?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Shannon made the motion. Matt's not here. Ken?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Julie, thank you so much for all your hard work up there.
Thank you.
And then I think you're actually up next for remote learning.
I am.
Roll right into that.
We'll take a stretch break while we pull that one up. Okay. So what I wanted to try to explain here was the work, or is the work, that we've been working on since school let out. And so it's a July and August update, but really it's kind of, you know, how we kicked into gear as soon as school got out to start planning for the fall. And I can't even go any further without thanking the administrative team, the PDC, and all the teachers who are out there just searching for information and sharing it with all of us, trying out ideas and bringing them back to us. It's been amazing. And so I just want to thank everybody right out of the gate before we even get started. So what we're talking about here in the district is trying to figure out a way to put a name to what we're looking at and working on. And I want to thank Caroline Epp for sharing a video that kind of went viral within our group around adopting a high-flex model. So what I'm trying to do here is to show you three different things that, or five different things, really, that I think will help us build a construct for what we're talking about if we were to go remote slash hybrid. I'm sorry, remote slash hybrid in the fall. And so we've been looking at online coursework for hybrid classes. We have, in different groups, been reading Small Teaching Online, been looking at Zoom and reading books around teaching effectively with Zoom to help build collaboration within the classroom through the teacher's perspective. We've been taking online courses. One project that we've been taking a course on, different, you know, different people, obviously, not everybody. But one great course is the Modern Classrooms Project. So we've been trying to pull information from there to help articulate a vision around remote and hybrid learning. And we've also been looking at content through the Blended Content Studio work. And so I have links here that you're certainly welcome to click on when we send this presentation out to you. But I think it will help kind of help us build that collective vision around what a high-flex model looks like in education. You can go to the next slide. So we're trying to answer the question, you know, what is the need? So what are we doing with technology to support hybrid and remote learning? So we have four kind of major concepts or questions that we're looking to address within hybrid and remote learning. And one is, how do we create impactful lessons? And so the answer is that we're trying to determine to, you know, to that question is, what do we have that will work to help us bring this forward? So we have learning management systems. We are working through instructional strategy trainings to address whole group, small group instruction, student engagement. And then the other side is the parental support side. So that's one project within the scope. The next level that we're looking at is how do we communicate with students? What's the best way for us to do that? What's the most effective way for that to happen? So we're looking at how to engage Zoom rooms. We have that technology now, how to use Google Hangouts. We're attending a training, a train, the trainer training around developing diverse learning skills and strategies in the classroom. And then we have other things such as the Modern Classroom Training. So we're calling all of these resources to help us figure out what's the most effective way to communicate with students if we were to go hybrid and/or remote. The other question we had is, how do we build classroom communities, collaboration, and feedback for students? We know that that's something very important to us. So we're looking at different technologies to help us support that. And those technologies are Flipgrid, Padlet, Peer Deck, Screencastify, Screencastify Submit, EdPuzzle, and Cami. Those are some different types of technologies that help us to build the community along with deliver the content and to collect feedback from students and to deliver feedback to students. And so we're really looking at all of these different capabilities to help us build that process in. And then how do we support all of our students? We know that our students will be coming back with a lot of different needs, and we want to be able to support those needs. So we're looking at our SEL trainings, our Yale support sessions that we have running this summer, trainings through Dr. Elizabeth Englander. She's done a lot of work on returning to school. And additionally, we're looking at trauma-informed schools to pull resources to help support us in our work with students as well as our work with the ADL. So lots of different tentacles to many of these questions. You can go to the next slide. So over the summer, we've been working pretty deeply on developing instructional pedagogy in the high-flex model. And so just kind of a summary, what I just think I may have just restated everything here, but books and training videos, taking online webinars and courses. I've never seen so many people in a summer setting send so many emails to our groups around the different trainings they've attended. So it's been pretty amazing and awesome to receive all these updates from people. We're also updating our MRSD teacher website to really identify where all these skills and strategies lie within classroom instruction, classroom units, and lesson delivery. We are looking at the planning of our 10 days at the start of the school year to help promote all of these instructional technologies within the course of the school day. And we do have our teacher teams, excuse me, who are also working this summer to develop workshops that can be delivered within each school setting. In addition to that, we are building best practices to support content delivery through CSOW at the K to two level, Google Classroom in the grades three to 12 levels, and to develop best practices in universal delivery systems within those structures so that parents who have children in grades three and five and 10 will be able to readily access Google Classroom and understand what they're looking at and not have it, you know, be so different and striated between each different school or grade level. In addition to that, we're building and dropping collaboration sessions for teachers. We haven't gotten to that phase yet because we're still in summer. But our goal is to continuously professionally develop teachers over the course of however many months we may be in that type of model to build in strong strategy work. In addition to that, we'll also be going into this, a couple of classrooms to create videos to show teachers the different technologies that will be available to them in the classroom when they do return to school so that we're able to help people identify different ways to connect to the technology that will be readily available at the start of the school year. That was a lot. Okay, the next slide. So I just wanted to try to give you a little visual around PDC work, principal work, trainers and tech staff work. Those are all the different things we're looking at for the optional summer work, which is on the left-hand side of the slide, and the kind of mandatory expected trainings that we'll be offering at the start of the school year within those 10 days that we have available to us. And so we're doing all, we're doing our trainings around two themes. One is the instructional strategy work, if you will, you know, the pedagogy, but also the technology work, which is understanding it, different ways to maximize the technology that we have available to staff. In addition to that, the SEL components. The last thing I'll say about this work is that we understand that families will need some support around, how do I, you know, connect to all of this? Where should I go as a parent? So we'll be offering parent tutorials and webinars in the fall to help parents get a sense of, you know, the different strategies and different technologies we have available. We will have online tutorials readily available for parents and IT parent support and help center. And we're also building in our SEL components for families through our ADL work and our work with our SEL resources. So I feel like we'll have much more robust opportunities to offer families to, you know, work through this program should we go hybrid slash remote as well. I think that might be it on this slide.
Thank you, Julie. It's a lot of work, and I really appreciate seeing how all of that technology is going to come together. Are there any school committee comments and questions for Julie about her remote learning and ADL presentation?
No.
Julie, this is Ken Warnock. I just want to thank you and, and know that you've been, it's, it's great to see that all of this has been going on, not necessarily in public view, but to purpose for the fall. So.
Thank you. It's been a whole collaborative district-wide effort, let me tell you.
I have a question, Julie. It's Shannon. So as you look at the online slash hybrid, high flex, I like that word actually, high flex, how do you engage the younger kids? How do you engage the little guys? How does that happen? I mean, are they sitting in front of a computer? And how does, how do you make those connections? Because I think that's what parents are most worried about is if we go to an online model, which we will at some point, I mean, I don't think anybody's arguing that that's not going to happen. You know, we may see some sort of shutdown at some point. So how do you engage those younger kids to reach them and teach them something? I think that's a big challenge.
That's the biggest question on the mind of every single elementary teacher in the district, if you will. And I think that that's the work that we're working on over the course of this month in August to really identify what does instruction look like in this model in terms of, right now, we have a 90-minute literacy block. How do you break that up so that you're able to work with small groups of students, but also offer full class instruction? And that's the pedagogy work that, that we're really looking at. How do you take what we have, break that apart, and make it useful and meaningful? And, um, and that's, that's really the work that we're doing right now. And so I, I can't spit out an answer because it's different for each content area. It's different for each grade level. But I will tell you that every single teacher in this district is working on answering that question.
Julie, I have a question, and I don't want to get too into the weeds on this because I know we have other presentations tonight. But when working with young kids, like I think nobody wants to see their young children sitting in front of a screen all day. So do you foresee that there will be a way to integrate some of the paper and pencil and actual book materials along with the technology in a meaningful way?
Yes. Can you just restate that for me, Sarah? Just, I'm sorry.
I think I said, will there be a way to integrate the hard copies of materials, like the books and the paper and the pencils, in a meaningful way that, you know, connects with all of what's happening online?
Yes. So we will have options available to all students. So we're looking at how to, I'll use No Atom for example, this is an ongoing conversation that we're having right now around making sure that we have enough materials to send home for students to do independent, um, project work around the No Atom units so that we're not just having the teacher kind of do a demo for the kids and have students watching. So we're looking at collecting as much material as we can to send home to help support not just a remote model, if you will. So we'll have more integration and more student-centered work happening. We do know that that's very important. We didn't have that option, obviously, when we had to flip into remote so quickly in the spring. You know, obviously, we had no idea that we'd be out for the rest of the school year when that occurred. So we do know now that it can get like that, obviously relatively quickly. So we're really trying to think of different ways to get as much material home at the beginning of the school year as possible.
Awesome. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So how do we, to, to, two things. First, make sure, and I don't mean test teachers, but how do we test, I'm using the word test, test readiness to do what they need to do online? So that we're not up against it like we were at our five o'clock meeting when all of us were trying to get to a Zoom meeting and we were, everyone waits to the last minute. And I just want to make sure that we are, we're certain on September, whatever it is, that teachers feel confident and good about what they're going to be doing and have a support system. So if they're hitting the wall, they know where to go. So that's my first question.
Okay, I'll answer that one first then. I think that that's the rule of professional development. So we feel lucky that we have those 10 days at the beginning of the school year. But I will honestly tell you that I want to say almost all of our teachers are already looking at building their, you know, repertoire or their toolbox of skills around a lot of these different technologies so that they're not feeling up against it. Because I, I don't think any teacher in the district felt really good about, you know, having to learn that as we were on the fly. That was tough. That was tough for everybody. So now that we know that we have this time available to us, I do believe that people are taking advantage of that time. In addition to that, we're organizing whatever trainings we have offered this summer into a structure for, for full mandatory trainings to happen at the start of the school year.
Great. And then there's a technology piece at home. And it's, you know, you, on that slide, it said something about making sure that parents have the support. And again, you know, we're very limited in the number of technology support people we employ. So how are we scaling that so that we're not overwhelming those few people trying to get people online and, and ready to go?
So we do have technology staff in the district, but there is a help desk component that we will be creating. And I'm not entirely sure who will staff that yet because many of our technology support people are in the buildings doing work, but also our technology gurus are teaching. So we have to really think about identifying a person who can kind of man the fort in terms of the technology desk, front help desk, if you will. And, and that can't be a classroom teacher, obviously, but we do, we do know that we have to identify a staff member to help support that.
We're also looking at potentially adding contracted services to augment our current technology staffing, knowing that if we are in the hybrid model, we are going to be hard pressed to be serving both in-school and out-of-school environments at the same time. So there may be some costs associated with it, but we can certainly, we're certainly planning for it.
May I ask one last question? Annie sort of reminded me. How are we going to ensure consistency across the board? That like all the fourth grade students are getting the same thing? All of the, you know, ninth grade students are getting the same thing in the, you know, the respective areas where it's appropriate? Because I think that was a big issue in the spring. So how are we going to ensure that that is happening?
So right now, our principals have identified trainers within their buildings to come together and to develop expectations across the school and the grade levels. Because we have two elementary schools, we just, we will be having our elementary group, or train the trainers work together to ensure that, you know, a K vision is complete, a first grade vision, second grade, third grade, so that we're clear in our expectations across the grade level. Middle and high schools obviously are separated from each other. So we'll have those train the trainer models supporting the school that way to ensure that grade level alignment happens across the school. It's a lot of moving parts, but you know, everybody's in it and, and really thinking about all these things and, and pulling it all together. So I will say that I'm happy, I'm happy with all the progress we've already been able to make it throughout the summer, quite frankly. It's pretty incredible.
Can I ask one quick question about the trainers, Julie? So if parents have concerns, and you may not have gotten this far yet, but I just want to make sure that we're putting out there eventually that when parents have concerns, who should they be turning to? Should it be their principal or should it be the building trainers? Because the teachers won't have the bandwidth to deal with this.
I agree with that. I do. I think that we are developing the protocols for that so that we are not overwhelming classroom teachers at the same time as principals in kind of having a help desk over here. So we really need to flesh that out. But that's a real question that we have as well. We will get to that before the start of the school year.
And Teresa, if you're talking about typical, like, the question about will my fourth grader have exactly the same experience as every other fourth grader? I don't know that we achieve that on any given year. I mean, there are, every class has some variations. So I, I think we have to have the two tracks. There's kind of the technical components, which could be difficult to navigate because of this new hybrid model we're in. And then there's the typical, I have questions about what's going on in my class. And we've got the entire problem solving guide that is just a step by step of how, how to work things up the chain of command, so to speak, if you're not having success in that first level conversation with your classroom teacher. So we tend to bring that out at the beginning of the year and the beginning of every semester. So I think you bring up a question that really helps me start to think about how we need to differentiate between what, what is the question that's really being asked in terms of the experience that students having. So thanks for raising that, and we'll try to make it clearer for people going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be back in a few weeks with another update for you.
Awesome. Thanks so much. Thank you for all your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated by all of us, and I'm sure all the people on the call listening in. All right. I think Pam's up.
I am. And it's my slide deck that I didn't load. So I'm going to, while I'm loading it, I'm going to offer my, my thanks to Julie. She really is working with the whole team. And it was really thoughtful of her to give credit to everybody. But she's running point on coordinating a lot of people and funneling up a lot of the work that people are doing to the district team. So just a lot of appreciation for everything that's getting done and a much noted, thanks for bringing the literacy review and then determination to a close. That has been, I think, a project since you landed in the district, probably you're going on to your five, so many years ago now. So thank you very much for, for taking that all on. It's, it's really helping push us in the right direction. So thank you.
Thank you. Happy to do it. Happy to be here.
So my update tonight is about reentry, which is really kind of the, the backdrop for any, for all of the conversation we're having. And I just want to start by acknowledging Jake's comments and hoping that Julie spoke a little bit to some of his concerns, but also wanting to acknowledge that a lot of the work that we are doing for reopening and for preparing for hybrid isn't really about educational practice. It's really an exercise in reorganizing operations and figuring out a way to do, to solve part of the public health crisis. So it is not inspirational. Those are words that I, I believed, I think, 11 years ago when I wrote them, and I still believe them today. But I'm also aware that the work that's right before us now to try and prepare school, if getting kids back in the building is our mission, is, it is very technical before it can be a focus on pedagogy. And I know that Julie is working continuously with the staff to make sure that they're ready to execute the pedagogy when we get there. So unfortunately, part of my conversation is just around the compliance and the safety guidelines and liability for the district and how we're going to make sure that when we undertake this, we're doing it in a way that is not only keeping our students and our staff safe, but also the community. Because the reason for closing down in the first place was because we were identified as areas that would accelerate community spread. So if we don't attend to some of the, the technical and mundane work of preparing process and protocols for people to follow, we could be contributing to a bigger problem. So I just wanted to start by acknowledging, I understand his point of view, and I agree that we should be doing as much as we can to keep this about using it as opportunity to improve education and, and not just this exercise that it seems to be that we're stuck in about planning technicalities of reopening. With that said, I think in conversation that we're going to have tonight in the planning update, you are going to see that life on the inside in a hybrid model is going to come with some feeling of constraint and rigidity, not by design, but again, by trying to implement some of those safety measures and maintain social distancing and contain the amount of intermingling students can do in the building. It, it may leave an undesired result for some, and we'll all have to kind of take that into consideration and, and process that over the next couple of weeks. So in tonight's update, on last Friday, we submitted, excuse me while I add a little light, last Friday, we submitted our preliminary update to the Department of Education just expressing that we had gone through an exercise in feasibility, in a feasibility study and established a six-foot social distancing guideline that essentially left us with the only in-school option being the hybrid. So we've been studying the hybrid further and looking at the implications of that program or of that choice on our programming for school. So we have Joanne and Tricia here tonight, the middle and high school principals, to just give you an update on how they're seeing it play out as they undertake scheduling, scheduling students into the hybrid model. Jason Waldron, our facilities manager, is going to get, and Avi will together give us an update on our analysis of HVAC and ventilation systems in the building. This is an area of high concern, not only for our association, but it's been brought up on a list, a lot of listservs in terms of ensuring the, the safety of the building for staff and students to return. Transportation is now on the table with the guidelines out in our local guidelines. We are seeing a few, a few inconsistencies in being able to optimize ridership on the bus between some of the state recommended, recommended guidelines and our local guideline. So Avi's going to take you through basically what ridership will look like, what our capacity will be, what the potential cost is. And then we do want to spend a little time. I, I feel like in any given year, when we're evaluating whether or not to add a curriculum coach, how to advance the budget to the next year, whether we should be eliminating staff, the financial implications of our decisions are always a really big part of the conversation. Not that we should be deciding what's in the best interest of students based on dollars and cents all of the time, but I think what we're seeing is some escalating costs associated with the models that we feel we would be irresponsible if we didn't bring that to your attention as an area of concern as we look beyond COVID, right? So we're trying to make a decision for right now, for right here in the moment in the fall and what's in our best interest. And we just want to be clear on what we might be, on what the implication of what we decide now, what that might have on the out-years for budgeting. And then I'll talk about next steps and timelines. I know I'm, I'm really anxious to have a final decision and to know what our future's going to be. I know the community is as well. And I've been saying mid-August pretty much since the spring, and I think that's just about where we're going to land. So we're probably looking at about another two weeks of study and deliberation before we pull in for a final decision, but a little bit more detail on that later on. So before I throw it over to, to Tricia and to Joanne, I'm just going to give the community a quick update on what our feasibility study conclusions are to this point. So I ran through a couple of these already, so I won't repeat myself with the six-foot social distancing, the hybrid model. At this point, we are looking at an investment of one and a half to $2 million to bring in-person hybrid, in-person and hybrid, excuse me, in-person hybrid model online. So it's going to take a significant investment in additional staffing. That's one thing we've identified as a need within the hybrid model. Having students in the building socially distanced in cohorts of 12. We're going to require additional staff at the middle school just to cover core areas, and then additional staff in the support realm at all schools to help manage some of the implementation of the safety guidelines, things like having people available and monitoring use of bathrooms so that they are appropriately, people are using the proper hygiene protocols and that they're cleaned appropriately after. We did establish that we couldn't get to the full in-person with the, with the guidelines that were established. And what we're going to deal with tonight is just to implement the hybrid model at the high school in a manner consistent with the DESE guidelines. Doesn't allow us to access the full program. To access the full program puts us out of compliance with the DESE guidelines. So that's going to be the bulk of what Joanne and Tricia speak to you about tonight. And I think it's very important for us to note that the survey results show that the community has a strong interest in the hybrid model and getting kids back in school at all three levels. It averaged at around 85% of families interested in bringing students back in. And just to address one of the concerns someone had brought up with them, with the survey, the survey was, was designed to represent every individual student. So each family was asked to fill out a survey representing each child in their household so we could get an accurate headcount of how many students may be returning back to school. So when So when we look at sifting out for household versus individual student reporting, I would say there's about a 5% margin of error between households represented. So if it's 85% of total students returning, it may average as low as 80% of households wanting to return. But I don't think there's enough, there, there isn't a significant enough shift to discount that the overwhelming position of the community was that if we can bring kids back safely and adhere to the guidelines, they would like to take advantage of that opportunity. But we do know anecdotally that the high school academic program is probably a key factor in whether will it, people are willing to participate. So we think tonight's conversation is going to be important in helping people make some decisions going forward. And what we also learned is that at the elementary model, not to leave them out of the conversation tonight, but I think we'll focus on them at our next meeting, kind of in the pure technical sense, achieving two cohorts of 12 over the course of the week. It's, it's a much simpler math problem to divide up a class of 22 into two equal halves, each having two days in school a week and limiting the teachers' access to, to a number of contacts to about 22 to 24. Whereas you'll see as they talk about the middle high school, in those cohort models, we've got cohorts of 60 to 125 students with teachers seeing anywhere between 60 and 120, possibly up to 130 at the middle school each week. So that's where there's some public health concern that comes in. That, those are our general conclusions so far. We continue to move down the track of planning for hybrid and I'm going to ask Joanne first to jump in and give us a more in-depth look at that middle school schedule and the implications of hybrid before. And then we'll go to the high school after that and then we'll talk a little bit about our next steps.
Pam, do you want me to show? There you go. Okay, so you're so quick on the draw with that presentation. I was going to share my screen. So before I start-
If this works for you, we'll do it.
Yeah, no, this works. It may, this may be a slightly older version, but if that's the case, I'll just amend as we go. I just want to start by echoing a little bit of the themes that Sarah brought up at the beginning and some of the themes too that Pam just mentioned. I, and I think it's important to state the obvious, which is this is not normal. We are not living through anything normal right now. We haven't been for about five months. Feels like it's been more like two years. And this next school year is not going to be anything remotely resembling what we remember and wish for as normal. That being said, I want to let families know that middle school teachers, we, we love our children, we love our work and we will do everything in our power to make this new normal feel as supportive as we can for our kids. You know, coronavirus is impacting all of us and for some of us, it has impacted us in the most personal and devastating of ways. And I just think it's really important for us as a community to collectively acknowledge that and reflect on that and realize that emotions are very, very high right now. And we have to think about taking the emotions out of the decisions that we make because the decisions that we make are impacting our whole community. And right now, we have roughly 170 people on the call, right? But if I were to go to Aspen right now at the district level and click on all the boxes of students and faculty and staff and families to send an email, there would be 2,006, nearly 2,600 recipients of that email. So the decisions that we make will have an exponential impact on a very large community. So we have to be smart about what we do. And it's complicated because the best public health decisions do not align with the best educational decisions and the best educational decisions do not align with the best public health decisions and none of it aligns with the best social emotional health decisions that we all know that we need to make for our kids and also for ourselves and for the adults in this. So I'm just asking, as Sarah had asked, as we move through the process, if we can try to leave the emotions at the door, the plethora of emotions, leave them at the door, let's focus on the data, let's focus on the science, let's remember that the budget is a data point that's important to think about. And just make sure that the decisions that we make are in best interests, short-term, intermediate term and long-term, because this is going to be a bit of a, of a road and a journey for us. And that being said, let me move into, so what I want to describe for you a little bit more detail is what the hybrid model would look like at the middle school. And this is very technical fact-based, what it would look like. I can get into the touchy-feely stuff that I love so much at another time, if that's a presentation that you'd like us to have. So what's the hybrid model going to look like? What would a fully remote model going to, what would a fully remote model look like? And the hybrid model is a structure that allows students to be in school some days and out of school other days, learning remotely. And the schedule has to be fluid because we need to be able, not to just move kids in and out of being in school and being out of school, but we need to be fluid and be ready for everybody being out of school again because COVID numbers have spiked, the state is ordering us out or a student in the classroom has flu and cold symptoms and that doctor has recommended that the student get a coronavirus test, which in that case means that student has to quarantine for 14 days, as do all the other students and teachers that that student came into contact with. So at any given point, especially during flu and cold season, we may have to move to fully remote because we have had to quarantine a significant enough number of our faculty that we just can't run school in person. So that's part of what that hybrid model is. And then the fully remote model, this is an older version of the presentation, but we would likely keep something similar to our existing schedule or, or create something that might look similar to the hybrid model so that we can move in and out. Thanks Pam. So hybrid model, what's it look like? Very simply, we're looking at two cohorts. Tricia Puglisi coined the green hope cohort and the white cohort, which is great because that's our school colors. So this in very simple terms is I, I took each grade level and split them down the middle. So each cohort gets half. So we have 104 kids in the sixth grade all the way up to 138, oh, sorry, 128 kids at the eighth grade level. These cohorts will be developed based on sibling relationships because we want to make sure when, if you have, you know, two children, four children, five children, whatever the case is, that all your children are in school on the same day and we're not throwing families off kilter. So the majority of these hybrid cohorts will be developed using sibling models. If we look a little bit more in detail, I'm ready for the next slide. All right, so when are they in school, when are they out of school? Cohort, green cohort is in school two days, white cohort is in school two days. Those days differ. Everybody's out remotely on a third day. We have not yet determined what day of the week that will be. There's been some talk about Mondays because of holidays, but then there's been some talk about Wednesdays for building cleaning. So we don't, we don't know yet, but what we do know is that each cohort would be in school for two days of the week and each cohort would be out remotely three days, with one of those three days meaning the whole school is on a remote learning day. Good to go on the slides.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I've got too many screens, Bob, juggling around here. There we go.
So, um, middle school teachers are sitting up and paying attention to this. So what we have here are two scheduling options and there's two options because, because there's different variables. And I believe very, very strongly in the collective brain. So I want to bring some schedule options in front of my teachers. I have an implementation task force. We'll have our first meeting this week on Thursday. Many, many things to talk about in terms of getting the school up and ready to roll in the hybrid model and one of those things is schedule. Got some highly intelligent, highly educated people in the room when you talk about teachers. So I want them to look at these two options and really collectively decide what they think might, might make the most sense. In essence, what we have is we would split, we're, right now, we're in a, oh no, we'd say in trimesters. I want to say we're in quarters, but we're in trimesters. What we would do is add two exploratory teachers to each team so that we can divide the grade up as much as possible in order to fit them in under that six-foot social distancing guideline. And then we're taking our seven sections, our seven blocks in the day, A through G, and we're splitting them over a two-day period. So over two days, each student would have all seven of their classes. The, it would require adding a staff member, it would require adding one exploratory teacher so that we could put two exploratories at every grade level. So for example, sixth grade might have art and gym in trimester one and then in trimester two, they'd have engineering and health. In trimester three, they would have music and, I'm forgetting my, my sixth, oh, and the new one. Whatever combination, and, and any number of combinations like that. Every trimester it would split. It would also, this schedule would also require increasing foreign language at seventh grade level to a full-time position. You'll notice you look at this in structure, that the blocks are anywhere from 75 to 80 minutes. The instructional time within that block would need to be at least 55 minutes, but we wanted to build in that extra 25 minutes. And when I say we, I mean Kim Provo and I'm going to work with this. We wanted to build in that extra 25 minutes within the block for teacher discretion, for movement breaks, mask breaks, dealing with tech issues, cleaning their, their workstations as they're transitioning in and out of the classroom. So you're looking at instructional blocks of 55 minutes, but blocks of time that they're with the teacher in each individual class of 75 to 80 minutes. The primary difference between the schedule on the left and the schedule on the right is lunch. The schedule on the left has all students eating lunch for a half an hour at the same time during the day. That could put some pressure on our food services people. That could also, or would also reduce the, the flexibility of movement around the campus at lunchtime. The schedule on the right has a split lunch, like we're, what we're familiar with now, but each lunch is a 40-minute period and each grade eats lunch at a different time. So a little bit more flexibility in that. It does have some end-of-day implications for eighth grade, however. You'll notice at the end of both days on option one schedule, we have an advisory checkout slash SEL time built in. And then option two, we have it only at the end, on the end of the second day. But we feel it's very, very important to explicitly build in social emotional work. You know, we're used to the me block at the middle school. This will be much more like an advisory period. All students, whether they're in school or out of school, will be connected to one adult and they'll be anchor groups. So we will connect a core group of kids within the building with a core group of kids outside that are learning remotely on that day. And that core group will be there to support each other and they're, they'll all be connected to an adult. And then you see each day ends with a teacher preparatory period so they can actually do the behind-the-scenes work, which frankly, as a teacher, is, is really where most of the work lies, what you can do when you're not in the classroom to prepare for the classroom, which means that the school to for students would end at 1:45. And this, these schedules also would have teachers having at least one other prep block either on day one or day two. So we can, it's a lot, so you'll, you'll have questions and I'll be ready to answer them for you. So what will it look like within the classroom? So we know that desks will be six-foot space apart. These green squares represent student desks. The blue square is the teacher and the teacher's blue because they're in the room with the kids, but they're also connecting with the students remotely. Depending on the grade level, we would have anywhere from nine to 12 students in a room at any time. Students will be assigned to a specific seat that they will have to remain in until we're at an appropriate transition period where there's been a 48-hour gap and we can move them to a different seat. And that's for contact tracing. So if a student has symptoms and they are required to be tested for coronavirus, we now know based on the structure, based on the numbered, the numbered seats, who they were in contact with. So teach, students will remain in the same classroom all day long. They will not move. This is based on our local public health guidance in terms of what are the best public health decisions that we can make. And this filed this under the not great for education, but appropriate for, for public safety. Students remain in the classroom, teachers do the rotating. So as teachers come into a new class, they, they wipe down the instructional area, but the students haven't moved, so we don't have to worry about cleaning the rest of the classroom. Again, public health, we have been advised not to intermingle groups to keep the same nine to 12 students together for the entire school year and that's going to have some programmatic implications, which I will get into. So, public health. Students in their pods within the same classroom for the entirety of the day, they will be exposed to eight to 11 other students during the school day and up to seven teachers over the course of the two days. So they'll remain in their classroom and in that small little pod. Transitions will be monitored to minimize interactions with other pods moving through the hallway. We will stagger transitions so we don't have a lot of two-way traffic and students interacting with each other. Students will be exposed to other pod members, other cohorts on the bus. That's a topic for a different day. Exposure for teachers. Up to 64 students a day is what our general education teachers would be exposed to, as well as our exploratory teachers, special education teachers. It will vary based on when they are in classrooms for support and when they're in small pull-out groups. But on a weekly basis, the adults in the building will be exposed to anywhere from 105 to 128 students and a varied number of other adults depending on if they have in-class support and a special educator or a teaching assistant in the classroom with them. Good to go. Okay, so I'm, you know, I was a sixth grade teacher, so very like little kid images, but you know, sometimes keep it simple for everybody and it, and it becomes very clear. So how does the remote part of this look? You've noticed each, each side has a 7:45, so at 7:45, the school day starts. You have a group of students in the school, sitting in their designated classroom, wearing their masks, ready to go there with the teacher. And then you have students at home linked in through Zoom, ready to learn remotely. Teachers are taking attendance during every block, so students' presence at that attendance is accounted for. You know, Annie, you had mentioned it takes us time to log on or we're late. Well, lateness is going to be something like if they were walking into a classroom late. We don't want students to be late. We want them to be on time and ready for learning. The teacher will be in the classroom with a variety of technology tools, including desktop computers, laptop computer, document camera, iPad, screen projector, teaching the students in front of them, teaching the students remotely. In most cases, teachers will develop lessons that are most appropriate for a remote instruction model and then fold the in-person kids into that. That's the best way to approach it. Caroline Epke again shared a phenomenal video with us and it was kind of eye-opening for us when we saw that. It was like, oh, okay, this makes a lot of sense. Lots of work, but definitely doable. And so, I mean, in a nutshell, that's what it will look like. It'll be real time, there will be a schedule that students will follow every day. Students will be accountable for their learning, teachers will be accountable for their teaching and, and we'll see what this world looks like when we're, when we're living it. We realize that we're going to have to reflect and adjust constantly because it will be a moving target and we will learn as we go and we will do our best to adapt and, and refine and improve as we go. Next slide. Okay, so what are the implications to our programming? This is again, you know, the public health guidelines have, have kind of pushed the envelope in terms of this. And it's been an interesting evolution, this process. We started off with, I think it was June or July, you know, let's just see if we can get all of the kids in the building. Can we get them all in? Hey, yes, we can get them all in. Well, we can get them all in, but now some of them are in the cafeteria. And so even if they're in the building, they're still learning remotely. You know, getting them all into the building felt very much like warehousing students and just didn't feel good from an educational standpoint, public health standpoint, social emotional standpoint. So then there was the decision to, to go with the six-foot social distancing. Great, let's look at the hybrid. We can do the hybrid. And then as we dug a little deeper into the hybrid and what it looks like based on the public health recommendations and requirements to not intermingle our cohorts, what we found is programming was impacted. So right now, at our current staffing that we have, we would not be able to offer any leveled math in grade seven and eight. So that means we have a grade level supported math, grade level math, accelerated math in seventh grade and we have algebra in eighth grade. As it stands right now, we are not able to support that programming and I'll get into the reasons why in a minute.
Joanne? Yeah, it's Annie. Leveled math, we've, we've talked about this leveled term and I just want to make sure that you, you just explained it, but I want you to reiterate it because I want to make sure everybody understands what leveled courses means.
Sure. So in the eighth grade, 128 students. We have sections, so each teacher can teach five sections on day one, five- We have sections, so each teacher can teach five sections on day one, five sections on day two. We have one point seven five sections of grade level math with support. That's kids who can do grade level math, but they need another body in the room to support them. And that includes students on I E Ps, students on five oh fours and general ed students. It's essentially who needs a little bit of extra help? That's level one. Level two is grade level. So it's just the appropriate mapped class for the student in this grade level. They're doing fine, they don't need extra support, but they're not quite ready for the more advanced work. Level three is algebra in eighth grade. So I mean, I'll talk about the sections, but I'll do that in a minute because it may make a little bit more sense with a visual. So did that answer it, Annie?
Joanne, I hate to jump in, but can I just step in for one second?
Yeah.
In terms of the implication for the high school is that if you don't have algebra in grade eight, then students would need to take algebra in grade nine, where generally those students in grade eight that take algebra move to geometry in grade nine.
So even if we started in hybrid and then everything went swimmingly and our whole country is back in school, you already started, you can't shift.
Right, okay. Yep. Okay, so foreign language will be impacted. It's complicated and I don't take all of our time right now. I'm speaking closely with the foreign language department chair, Michelle Magana, and we're looking at ways to get creative with it, but we will have to be creative with it and it won't look like what what it looks like now. So I'll just leave it at that and we'll get into more details later. Science and art are implicated or impacted because the science teacher can't stay in her room all day, the art teacher can't stay in her room all day, they're having to transport materials for labs, transport materials for kids to work on with art. So that's an implication there. And then we would have to hire that additional exploratory teacher to have that extra offering so that we can run seven sections over two days. Fully remote, if we were just fully remote all the time, there are minor programmatic changes because we would still want to add that exploratory teacher. Kind of what you just said, Annie, let's say we decided to start the year fully remotely. Or let's say we said, we're just going to stay fully remotely all year long. Who knows if there's not some miraculous vaccine in December and we're like, hey, look, we're in good shape now. We can go back to school for the springtime. It still has to be structured in such a way that it's going to support us going back if there's ever a way for us to go back. The science and art materials, same implication if we're fully remote. If we are fully remote, teachers will be teaching from their classrooms and we will also provide opportunities for in-person learning for our most vulnerable students. Next slide, we're almost done, everybody. Thanks for hanging in. Okay, so this is just a little bit more to explain those programmatic changes. So whenever you build a schedule at a school, typically we start with students with special needs that need special programming, specialized support in their classroom or whatnot, because their schedules are much less flexible. So we start there. In this scenario, we have to start at the alphabetical or sibling split because that's basically where we need to begin in determining who's in which cohort. And then we say, okay, then we split them fifty fifty. And then we say, okay, we can only put them at six foot, six feet apart, so we can only fit this many in a room. Then we're into the education piece and we say, okay, what are our special education needs in terms of how we group our students? What are the math levels in terms of how we need to group our students? And then what's the foreign language course that each student takes? And then we look at our resources. What resources do we have available to meet all these varying needs? So if you go to the next slide. So under the hybrid, we need to have homogenous cohort grouping. Nine kids that look the same, ten kids that look the same, twelve kids. When I say look the same, I mean the kind of programming that is delivered to them. The hybrid demands it and public health demands it because we cannot intermingle cohorts. I can't take this twelve and this twelve and then move eight of them from here and four of them from here to create another class so they can all have the right math class. I have to keep them all together. In the real world, or the, you know, the world we miss and love dearly, the overall right is we have this group of kids, but some of them have a sibling that they need to be with. Some of them take a supportive math class and another one takes algebra. One, some of them might have a sibling, but but, you know, they're a W and this is supposed to be a week where the A through C group is meeting. So there's all these different variables. And I'm not saying that we can't support the programming, but right now with our current resources, we can't support the programming. We would have to hire additional teachers to teach additional sections. So each teacher would teach five sections on day one and five sections on day two. Right now, just in eighth grade, we have ten point six six sections. And that's within the three levels. So I don't have a point six six person right now to teach those other three levels of math. So the hybrid model will require additional staffing if we're going to keep our program intact. And then what's the last slide? Okay, so staffing implications. I just said we don't have enough people. And then there's also additional staffing implications. So the district office has currently heard from approximately twenty percent of middle school staff saying that they will either be taking a family medical leave, they'll go out on F M L A, or they will just take a leave of absence if we are in person for a variety of different reasons. That's twenty percent that has come forward. I know of at least five or ten percent more who haven't come forward yet that I suspect will be coming forward. So based on that, we have an undetermined number of long-term substitute teachers that we are going to have to hire to fill in for the teachers that are out either on F M L A or some other kind of leave. We know that we have to add an additional exploratory teacher in order to fit the structure. We would need to hire six bus monitors in order to monitor social distancing on the bus and we would need to hire three daily substitute teachers for when the teachers who are in the building are out and also people to monitor transitions. And the fully remote model, minor staffing implications, except that we would want to hire that new exploratory teacher so that we can keep the model looking the way it would look in the hybrid in case we do end up going back in. So it's kind of messy, no matter how we slice it. And now we have questions.
Joanne, thank you for that presentation. I'm going to open it up to school committee questions. I'm not going to start with my question. So who'd like to start?
One thing, Sarah, I just, something I wanted to say to clarify. So there's a lot, I'm getting a lot of emails, all of us are about other schools, this district, other schools are making it work. They they are doing it, they can get happen. We are unique at Manchester Essex because at the middle school, we have one team per grade. Most other schools in the region have two, two and a half. So they have more people, they have more bodies to work with within those section and program differentials. We we don't, we just don't have the bodies. So in order to make it work, we're going to have to hire people.
Yeah, I agree. And one of our strengths is that we're a really small school in a small district and I love that. It's one of the reasons I chose to move here. And we have a really super efficient building with our middle school and our high school that serves us very well most of the time, but it is definitely impacting all of the discussions here. So school committee comments and questions for Joanne. Teresa?
Hi, Joanne. I have a rising sixth grader, I am your target audience here. So I have, I have a two-part question here. A lot of what I'm hearing from parents and our concerns with hybrid or at least some in-person school is so that people can see each other for the social component of it. And I just want to clarify what you said there, that these are isolated cohorts of groups of nine to twelve kids together for the entire day and the intention is to keep them separate based on the recommendations. So that's what we'd be getting for social interaction is that, am I hearing right what you're, what you presented?
Yes, you are. One exception, if if we can do this and I have a parent who I won't name because she wouldn't want me to, but she's doing some great legwork, looking for tents for the football field. And so there may be a time when more than one cohort is out there eating lunch, as an example, but they're still not going to intermingle. So it would be, here I am in my cohort and there's my best friend over there, two cohorts away, and we can wave and say hi to each other. But for the most part, they won't be intermingling. That's, you know, public health guidance and we take it very seriously.
And then the second part of my question has to do with that, that rising sixth grader. So I have some concerns about the sixth grade class coming up. And I know you said this was more logistics and and not so much the touchy feely, but there are a good number of us who are curious about this. There wasn't much able to be done last year to bring the two schools together, to bring this class together. And now they're going to be in this very strange situation, having come from two very separate schools. And so I'm wondering how discussions started about what that would look like to actually bring this group together as a cohesive unit in the hybrid or the remote learning situations and how, what that would look like.
Well, it's like you were in my brain this afternoon, Teresa, because I was starting to, I was at that level and I was thinking, you know, every year we have students from Manchester, students from Essex, they come together. We do work to build a community. And so I was rolling it around in my brain thinking, does it make sense for us to intermingle Manchester and Essex within the classroom? Because if there's a case of a student in Manchester who's sitting next to a student from Essex, we now have potentially just spread the virus to two communities. So that's a thing that I just thought of today and I need to flesh it out and talk with my team about it a little bit more. You know, should we keep Manchester kids and cohorts together as much as possible? And Essex kids, and obviously there'd be an overlap in some rooms because it's not an even balance. But then what does that do for the community, you know, and the connectedness and friendships and peer relations and all of those things that are really at the core of what middle school is all about?
Well, thank you for answering that. My hope is is just that these conversations continue and that since there is a remote component, no matter what, there's those those two days that whatever it takes to to bring them together. I have concerns about this lasting, being a lasting impact of them being together, but not as a group.
Likewise. And it's also further complicated because, you know, not all, everybody's social distancing is different. So we're tightening it up really well in the classroom and in the school environment where we control it, but we can't control it out in the community and not, not all kids are social distancing. When I'm at school, I see them. And so it complicates it from a public health perspective quite a bit.
Thank you.
Joanne, hi, it's Shannon. First of all, thank you for doing this incredibly granular work. Wow. So everything you just told us is predicated on the fact you have a full complement of staff.
Yes.
Right? You've already just told us that twenty percent of your staff has already asked for leave in determined amount and there are probably more to come. So I'm worried about that.
Want to call me at four in the morning, I'll be up.
I have been too, so I will, okay. And then, so I wanted to make that comment, but then I also wanted to follow up on what you were talking about having like in the classroom, having two kids from two different communities sitting together. And I know Pam just reminded me that Erin Kirchner is on the phone with us, on the meeting with us. Maybe she can talk about that. I know she's the public health director in Essex. Maybe she has a comment about that. I think that might be helpful to to hear from her on that. If she's on.
Yeah, hi, I can jump in. So this has all been really awesome. I just want to say you guys are all like parents, administrators, teachers, everyone's doing a really, it's a lot of work, I get it. So just to jump into that question about contact tracing, it would almost, I mean, it would be less work for me if there was one student in Essex and one student in Manchester or a handful of students in Essex and rather than having them all be in one community because we have to, each local public health department has to contact every single person, whether the positive person and the close contacts. So if you have one student from Essex and one student from Manchester, the Manchester nurse is contacting the Manchester people and the Essex nurse is contacting the Essex people. So it's basically, I mean, that's, it's a good point that we don't want to spread, we don't want to spread to multiple communities, but from a contact tracing perspective, I don't think, I don't think it matters. I think it's this, it's half a dozen of one, six of the other. Yes.
So this is Annie. We don't just have people in our buildings from Manchester or Essex. We have choice students, we have faculty and staff who may hail from a different town. You may have people that live in New Hampshire. So I I wonder, you know, when people say, well, we have a very low case count in Manchester and Essex, that's fine now, but when we start bringing people into the building, we are bringing in people from different communities who have different rates of infection. And so I wondered if you could speak to that. And also, can you, can you answer one other question for me? What is the testing result response rate? So I've had kids taking the test and had to wait more than a week to get responses or to get results. And I don't know what the average response rate is on the testing in this area.
So the last question is relatively easy to answer with the only exception that I can only speak to the Essex cases because those are the only ones I can see. In the last two weeks or twenty four days or something, the average result for a COVID test has been about five days, four point five five days. And it ranges from one day, I mean, it's a same day result for, you know, usually people who are in the hospital where they're doing the testing onsite to multiple, I'm looking at this list, multiple nine and ten day results. And those are from, I don't know, I don't know why. Some of them are from the C V S and Ipswich and it's nine days for one person and somebody who was tested on the same day got a result two days later. So I don't know why that is. I've heard various things, none of it makes very much sense to me because I was tested and got a result in two days. And a friend was tested right behind me in the car at C V S and Ipswich and had to wait a week. So I don't have an answer for that. And then as far as the cases, people coming in, I mean, we call them cases. I realize they're people and students and and parents and family members. But the same thing sort of applies with the exception that the bigger communities are leaning more on the community, the contact tracing collaborative, which is the free service the state has provided to help us with contact tracing. And I can tell you that Manchester and Essex have not used the contact tracers because there's quite a significant lag. Not always, but you know, it's it's days, not hours before a close contact has been in contact with somebody from the the community tracing collaborative. And and that doesn't work in a school setting when kids need to be in school every day. I mean, they need to know right away whether they're supposed to be quarantining.
Right, right.
What was the last question?
I don't have a third question for Eric. Sorry, you're awesome.
Okay.
My next question is for Joanne and Tricia when she speaks. And that is, can you tell me what your goal is in the hybrid model and what your goal is in the remote model? Because my goal in making a decision, you know, when we finally decide, is what's the best way to deliver our full educational program safely? And I just wondered if you could tell me what your goal is in developing a hybrid model and a remote model? Because I don't know if the highest full or full educational program is the goal there in both.
My goal is your goal, but I want to add, you know, social emotional health. These eleven to fourteen year olds, they're, this is a time in their life where they they need so much in addition to an education. So I want to deliver all that they need as best as we can, as safely as we can, which feels like a big ask. which feels like a big ask right now at this point. You know, I know the goal, the goal with the hybrid model is to get kids in school. We looked at this, we looked at the spring and the social emotional health impact, mental health impact of that. And there's a lot of talk about getting kids back into school and why we need to get them back in there for their social emotional health. But I fear that we're going to create issues for students who may not have any because they just want to be learning safely at their home. And what they think school is going to be is not at all what school is going to look like. So I worry about school avoidance. Or, you know, kids, you know, they come in for the first week and then they're like, yeah, Mom, I want to stay home and do it remotely. You know, there's, I have, I have a lot of worries and a lot of concerns. Keeping them home and doing it fully remotely is also not ideal. So it's just a very, it's a difficult kind of Sophie's Choice situation.
Thank you.
I know that's a good question.
Are we ready to transition to high school? And then maybe that will prompt some more questions later. We have a few more presentations to get through, so.
Yeah. It's my turn. So, hi, everybody. First of all, I want to thank Joanne for her presentation because she's really teed me up well. She's talked already about many of the details that also impact the high school. And I really also appreciate the amount of thought and emotion that she's put into this process. The other thing I just wanted to mention was to Jake Foster, I just want to let you know, this is going to sound very structural, just because right now it needs to be. But I also want you to know that we've been working on our vision of the graduate over the last year and a half. And we had hoped that this summer would be our time of strategic planning about really how to change education. And we will get there with this. Once we get through the structural part, I think that we will see some opportunities to look at our vision of the graduate and how it impacts what we're doing now. So I'm ready to go. So we could either be a hybrid or a fully remote structure. There kind of are three models that we're going to discuss here. A hybrid where there is no movement, a hybrid where there is movement, and then a fully remote structure. That's fine, you can go.
Sorry.
A few things we need to understand about, and that's okay, about the high school schedule before we really can take an understanding about what we're talking about is that in the high school, there are 299 unique sections of classes. On top of that, there are studies halls. This year, there would probably be more because we don't have the luxury of having students as teaching assistants or as independent study learners just because of the impact in terms of movement. In terms of sections, actually, this number is wrong, 42. It should be 52 singletons, meaning that for some courses, there's only one section. So for 42 of those sections, there's only one section. We offer 20 AP courses, 11 singleton AP of those. There's 11 that are singletons. We have 15 co-taught, supported singleton sections. And then we have 26 other singleton sections that include some foreign language and electives. So those are kind of constraints on building a cohort that allows students to really take part in their full high school schedule. So the first thing I'm going to talk about is the hybrid with no movement, which is kind of the model of the hybrid that meets public health guidance. And this is students remain in one class. We would put them in cohorts of 12. We would develop those cohorts based on their math placement. And all of the other core courses would be heterogeneously grouped. We would try to make foreign language part of those cohorts. But then again, dividing them by alphabet and then dividing them by math and then foreign language, it becomes very difficult. Core subject teachers would move to the classrooms to teach students. So students would only be exposed to their cohort, which would be about eight to 12 students, while teachers would be exposed to about 70 plus students per week. We'd have to take a look at our AP and elective program and maybe outsource that or have them complete those as an outsourced online program. This is kind of a breakdown of how the cohorts would be done by math. So if we look at our math courses, Algebra I through Statistics and the number of students, the number of cohorts, and then the number, the size of the cohort. So under this, we would have this no movement kind of schedule that kids would be scheduled in maybe English first block, math second block, social studies, then lunch, science, foreign language. It would differ student by cohort by cohort. But again, it would be just like English nine, English 10, English 11, English 12, heterogeneously taught. All right, so this is more of the hybrid structure that some of our community schools are looking at. And one of the questions is, does this meet the public health guidance? And so this would be us defining cohorts as a green group or a white group. So that doesn't mean that they're in a small group of students that remain together, but that they intermingle throughout the day. So we'd have approximately 250 students moving throughout the building per day. Students would follow their schedule and move between classes, but we would limit movement. So instead of having five classes meet per day, we would have three classes meet, four classes meet per day and lunch in the classroom. So that means they would only be in the hallways three times. There would be 12 students in a classroom per period. But again, the cohorts of students would mix throughout the day based on student schedules. So exposure would be about 50 unique students per teacher per day, depending on student schedule. And teachers would be exposed to 125 students plus per week. When we, to manage this, we would have one-way stairways and hallways to limit exposure during passing times. We would have staggered release and arrival times between classes during those three movement periods. Some electives would not run in order to reduce some of our core programs to below 24. We do have some sections that run above 24, about 10 sections run between 24 and 29. We need to reduce those to 24 to assure that there are only 12 students in a section. And again, that goes back to that splitting of the cohorts based on alphabet being really solid, which we kind of know it won't be. Students would have study halls in their schedule and we would need to find a space for that. And that might be in the auditorium. But again, we would need some guidance from the Board of Health in terms of dividing that space to meet their requirements. Lunch would be in the classroom with the teacher. Classes would be a 65-minute block with 15 minutes of passing time. And that may seem like a lot, but that would be based on a staggering of movement. So we don't have all kids in the hallways at the same time. One important factor, and I want you to remember this piece, is that under this model, classes would meet seven and a half times per 14 days. We're going to come back to that when we look at the remote model. But, so again, it would meet seven and a half times per 14 days. And this is a look at the two cohorts, green and white, and we'd be splitting the classes hopefully evenly, but we can't guarantee that. And the cohort would be defined by alphabet. And there could be an impact on student schedules based on the split at other levels and class size of each section. So we would probably have to reschedule some kids based on how those splits occur within each 299 sections. And this is what a daily schedule would be. One day would be all remote. We would run A through G, as you see down below. And then we would split our schedule over the other four days, A, B, C, and D, and then E, F, and G. And U Block being in the middle of the day. For those who don't know, U Block is our directed study and opportunities for students to make up work, meet with teachers, and to gain extra help, which would be done remotely from one room. In a fully remote schedule, what we would do is we'd run our typical school day schedule. At least that's what we would hope to do. We'd begin at 7:45 and end at 2:15. We'd run our A through G schedule over a seven-day rotation, which is our typical schedule, five classes meeting per day. The full schedule would run with typical time on learning. We would hope that teachers would teach from the classroom with students at home. We would look for opportunities for support, science labs, and other high need programs to be offered in the building on a limited basis to provide that hands-on experience for students. And in this model, classes would meet 10 times over the 14 days. And this is our regular bell schedule. And you can see, if you look at Block A, it meets five times over seven days. So this is our implications to programming under a hybrid no movement. This is just a summary. Cohort is defined by math. Core program is heterogeneously grouped. No electives and AP program would probably be outsourced. Under the hybrid, most of the programs run. Instructional time is reduced compared to our typical schedule in that there would be seven and a half class meetings per 14 days. And we need to really consider student management about study hall pending guidance from the Board of Health. And then in a full remote program, our full program runs, we do 10 class meetings per 14 days, which is our typical schedule. And we would be looking for opportunities to bring students into the building for extra support, science labs, and other high need programs. So that's what it looks like at the high school, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Tricia. I do actually have a question, it's both for you and Joanne. Thinking about getting the kids, I know that we all want our kids to see other kids and we want our kids to have some kind of opportunity to meet their teachers, like in real life, whether it's hybrid or remote. Do you foresee that at the beginning of the year, there could be opportunities in any of these situations for kids to like come in to pick up their materials and meet their teachers, maybe on the football field or under a tent or however we could work it out? That's my question.
I can, I can speak to that. And I think, yes, that is something that we could definitely consider and try to find a way to make work. Because certainly many classes, students are going to need books and other materials. So we need to find a way to disseminate those. So we may need to develop a structure to have that happen. I can also say, and I should, I need to say this just for my daughter. My daughter is a rising senior at a different school system. And she's listened to my meetings and she's very mad at me because there's nothing she wants more than to go back to school for her senior year. And I completely understand that. And it's very hard for her to understand the various implications of all the moving parts.
Yeah, I agree, Sarah, that at the beginning of the year, and also when the weather is still good, provided, you know, we have tents on the field, even on a rainy day, you know, there could be some opportunities for engagement. And I know all I'd have to do is put my team on that and we could absolutely figure out some creative things.
Thanks. Thank you both. Other school committee, does anybody have comments or questions for Tricia?
I'd like Tricia to answer my question about what her goal is in hybrid versus remote.
I believe at the high school level, and I know there may be people who disagree with me on this, so I'm going to preface this by that, that it is important to run our full program. Students at the secondary level have a variety of needs or a variety of passions, and we need to meet those. Whether it be access to the arts, being music or visual or digital arts, whether it be access to our really full elective program, our AP program, our co-taught program. There are so many opportunities for the high school students. And my, my goal is to offer all of those opportunities for them.
Anyone else from the school committee have a question for Tricia or Joanne?
I do. Hi, Tricia. I also have a senior who wants to go back to school. He also wants all of his courses. He wants to be able to take the whole ones. And he's not happy about the prospect of possibly not being able to choose elective or APs or honors or whatever. Anyway, that having been said, I'm looking for a little bit of clarity on hybrid with movement model. Feels like I'm ordering from a menu here. So a menu of food that I don't like, actually. So this hybrid with movement model, you mentioned something about the public health standards. Are we meeting that? Are we meeting those standards with the movement? Or is there just a lot of risk and a lot of risk for that to go wrong?
That's like a big question I have right now because based on what I read with the public health guidance is that we're supposed to limit exposure to 25 people. But what I'm hearing from some of our surrounding districts is that they are talking about those movements throughout the day and kind of intermingling students. So I do have questions about that in terms of, are they just, are they looking at that, are those other districts looking at that guidance? Or are we looking at it too critically? And I honestly, that, that's not a loaded question. That's honestly a question I don't know the answer to. But I am concerned about teachers being exposed to a high number of students who are intermingling on a regular basis in school and out of school.
I'll offer that I had a direct conversation with the Department of Education reopening leader today, and she's going to bring it to her medical team for further discussion. So this is where we, I think we see, sorry to interrupt Tricia, but I think this is where we see inconsistencies in the guidance, which is it allows for some loosening of the standard at the secondary. But then all of the checklists that they're supplying us with to go through and make good decisions has that 25 limit. We know that most of the language is around kind of that cocooning of kids into, of all ages, into these pods that don't interact. So we've got a couple of questions into the DESE that they just haven't gotten back to us on yet about what constitutes a large group gathering. I think common sense says if you have 60 people intermingling on a given day, that's somewhat of a large group gathering. That type of interaction does not seem to be allowed in any other public place. And Erin is a better, is probably a better person to weigh in on this. But I do think because we have a responsibility for the safety that, I don't know if it's a question that we can just say, hey, we're all right with it, even if it doesn't meet the guidelines because of the implications to a lot of individuals and our teaching staff. That's a pretty high number of people that they're going to see in a given day. So Erin, I don't know if you have any commentary on the fly. I hate to put you on the spot.
I don't have a specifically related to the school, but they've been pretty strict, like hard-nosed on the fact that the limit is 25 inside for a long-term sort of, you know, an all-day thing. The other guidance I've heard, not specifically related to school, is eight people per thousand square feet. And that relates to event space, auditorium, arenas, things like that. Again, it's not specifically related to school, but those are the numbers that have, you know, we've been hearing for the last six weeks or so.
So I think that's why we have a big question mark as to whether or not we can actually deliver the full program in the hybrid. Because it, it seems like it's going to run afoul of the guide, the guidelines.
Teresa, did you have something?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. So in the town hall forums that Pam did, it sounded like a really big concern from families was the accountability, both accountability of teachers to deliver and accountability of students to engage in the remote.
and accountability of students to engage in the remote setting based on what happened in the spring. And it sounds like in the plan for remote, though, that would be very much like a typical school day with typical grading and that sort of thing. So I'm just wondering if you can clarify whether I'm hearing that wrong or whether that is the case.
Teresa, you're hearing that exactly right. We would be looking at taking attendance in each class. We'd be looking at grading. We would be looking at full accountability of, for teachers and for students throughout the day. And it would look as though, even although we're fully remote, a typical school day.
And just to piggyback off of that, a lot of the feedback that we got was that there was a lack of feedback for kids. And so that's something else that would be part of it. A variety of actionable, specific feedback beyond just a grade on an assignment is always important, but particularly important in a remote model as you're looking to build a relationship and some rapport and engage students.
Thank you.
If we're all set with questions right now on the scheduling implications of the hybrid, knowing that we have inquiries into the Department of Ed on our interpretation of the guidance. I'd love to move to Jason and Avi to talk a little bit about the building. I know we've fielded questions through email, questions from staff, just on the safety of the building, the HVAC and ventilation systems. We have mostly newer buildings, and even our older building has newer systems. So I think we're well positioned there, but not my area of expertise. So if the committee's comfortable, I'll ask Jason to give us a summary of his findings.
Pam, can I ask you a quick question before we move on that? Maybe I'll direct it to all three of you. So we have been hearing a lot about other districts doing this or other districts doing that. Has any district in Massachusetts actually pulled the trigger on a, on a model? Or is everybody still kind of waiting?
Yes, somebody has.
Stamp it.
Sophia, we heard from the Somerville School Committee today that they have decided to do completely remote. I'm sorry, I am connected to one of the school committee members. They made that decision earlier.
Thanks, Sophia. Thank you. This is not a time for other, for public comment, but thank you for weighing in.
So in terms of what I know of the North Shore, is we're attempting to pull a meeting together of the superintendents this Friday to check in. No, the preliminary plans that were put in on Friday were kind of, I think I said this off the top of the meeting, I'm sorry if I'm repeating myself. They were indicators of where we thought we were heading with our first tier of development. So that kind of overview chart of what we see happening in each of the different models and what the feasibility told us about space. So we very much went into that first reporting system as a space analysis and a systems and a staffing analysis to see what could be, what could be done. Because I think they were making the assumption that in-person may be feasible, but no one had tested, stress-tested it yet. So I don't know of anyone that's going back full in-person. I think there are some, maybe Western Mass communities that are still discussing it, based on my conversation today. Most of the communities around here are kind of in the same position we are, which is hybrids on the table. And we're kind of marching through the steps to see what it looks like. So I know I had a conversation with a couple of people today via email, asking them this question, how are you handling what seems to be the need to be outside of the realm of the safety guidelines to run the full program? And everyone's just doing what we're doing, where we are now, which is full disclosure that to get to the program, we'll have to break what we think we understand of the guidelines. And I think the added piece of it is, not only are we breaking the safety guidelines, but I think to a superintendent that I've spoken to, we also know that going beyond what we think the safety guidelines are telling us also sets us up for a high probability of a rolling shutdown. Because, Erin, again, you understand this better than I do, but that's really going up the ante on somebody is found positive. Now they've been in class with 60 other kids in the course of the day. That's a lot of tracing and follow-up from what I can tell.
Yeah, it's a, it's a lot of tracing and follow-up, tracing and follow-up and testing, and then waiting for test results. And I think we really need to, you know, as a community, need to think about how many kids being out on quarantine due to one person testing positive? How many teachers out due to one person testing positive before a class, you know, a class needs to revert to fully remote, or a section, or the entire school needs to close for a full cleaning? That's like, those are things that can be data-driven, but need to be figured out in advance. And it is a lot. The contact tracing is very time-consuming. One person with three close contacts is, you know, multiple hours of work. No one answers the phone. We need to make daily contact, or, you know, every other day is acceptable if they're reasonably responsible with temperature checks and symptom checking and making sure they're staying home. And it's a lot of work for everyone, not just the health department.
Erin, can I ask, it's Joanne, look at the Department of Ed guidance. They talk about symptoms, you know, sore throat, fever, cough, all of the symptoms of flu and cold season.
Right.
Does that mean if a student, a student has that symptom on a Monday, they're in school? You know, that happens every day pretty much in the fall. If we send that student home, is that student required to get a test? Will the doctor say I have to test them, or discretionary based on their position? How does that work?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I wish I had an answer for you, and I think that's a better question for, I mean, we can do some of the research, like where were you? Have you been, you know, only at home with your family and your parents work, you know, from home? Or were they possibly exposed? And that's something that really is, it's a question probably for their family physician, but also individual based on what their behaviors have been. And is it the flu? Is it allergies? I mean, kids are largely asymptomatic. So, I mean, at least the younger kids for what we know right now. So the short answer is I don't know.
I get, my question, if it's not, I don't feel like you have to answer it, but I guess my question is, how much pressure, can the systems in Manchester and Essex support what we're going to need? Or should we be looking at building into our budget some expanded personnel to support this whole endeavor? Because if I use March and graduation day as an example of what, you know, as two kind of data points as to what the day-to-day will look like in terms of people's concern over other people being sick, it's pretty time-consuming, and it needs a lot of, I think we're going to need quite a few people.
I guess, I'm not, I'm not sure what you mean. I mean, like, the contact tracing is, it's a board of health. As much as the schools would be part of it, because you guys have the data, you guys have the information on who was in contact with whom. But as far as the phone calls, I mean, that's all through a communicable disease tracking program that only boards of health have access to.
Okay, so we have to do our in-school piece and then notify you, and then you'll take it from there. So we could be putting a lot of pressure on your system.
Yes, yep. And especially, I mean, I'm full-time. The Manchester Public Health nurse is 10 hours a week. And that's, that's five hours of meetings a week. So, I mean, a couple of positive people could really, could knock that out. I mean, but that, you know, that's, we adjust to that. We do what we can, and it is what it is. I don't want that to be a deciding factor of how to move forward with, with learning. But it's, yeah, it's a concern.
I have a question for Erin. I'm sorry. And then I know we need to move on to Avi and Jason's presentation. But do you think we'll ever get a testing site closer than the CVS and Ipswich? Like, would we, do you think that we'd be more testing available to our communities?
I mean, we're not, we don't do tests. I don't think even Gloucester is doing testing. So I think it would, it's up to the individual company. I mean, the individual facility. And even like Ipswich CVS, they send the samples to Quest. I mean, they don't even analyze the samples themselves. Beverly does testing, I think Beverly Hospital. There are multiple testing facilities, urgent care, doctor's office, maybe not doctor's offices, but multiple places for testing in Beverly Salem, Peabody. I don't think in Manchester and Essex will be getting any testing facilities.
We ready for Jason and Avi? Awesome. Hopefully you guys are still on the line.
Yep, hi, we're here. Jason, you there? I'm still, everyone. Hi. So I'm just going to give a quick introduction. I mean, Jason Walton, who's been our facilities manager since last summer, has been great. He is really diving deep into all of this information. And he's kind of our local expert. To me, interested in just keeping things simple and high level. So I can handle, hand any detailed questions over to him. But in terms of keeping things at a broad level, if you look at the guidance and what we all know, the basic goal is to bring in as much fresh air as possible and to avoid recirculating air. That's really what it's about. To do that, you really need to rely on heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, also known as HVAC systems. I'm going to be using the abbreviation HVAC constantly. That's more sophisticated, more modern. And I think if we were having this conversation even three years ago, I think we would be in a much different situation. Fortunately, there are district firsts, young, middle high school, 2010. That's about it. It's a modern.
Avi, you're in and out.
Can you hear me okay?
I think we've done mute everybody else. You were kind of in and out a little bit.
Okay, if we have maybe two microphones open, it might be that. How is that?
Little bit better. Thank you.
Little bit better. Sorry. A little remote today. Just interrupt me again if you can't hear me. But I was just saying that with the high school building from 2010, that was our first digitized control system for HVAC. And now as well, and I can see there are some other microphones that are open, so that might be part of the issue. But we are about to open a brand-new building for the classroom wing of Memorial School. The HVAC system there is already up and running. It works great. I know the people who've been there on board have noted, just immediately feel what the circulation of air is like there. Most modern than you can imagine. And a couple of years ago, in fiscal '18, we participated in a grant program with the Town of Essex, the Green Communities Grant, to put in a building automation system, BAS, basically digital control to be able to control the HVAC in that building as well. And so through all three of BAS, we have a lot of work.
Avi, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you for a minute. If your name is E. Decker, if you're calling in from your phone, can you mute? Thank you. Go ahead, Avi.
That's okay. Thank you. So that's really put us in a much better position to, in a modern fashion, monitor fresh air intake and set controls. How much, exactly what percentage of fresh air intake do we want? Obviously, we want to minimize recycled air. The goal is to use as little as possible. And so that's step one. Six covers a large portion of the building, not the entire building. But in all areas, for example, I'll mention also, in the Memorial School, the new classroom wing is completely covered. As you know, there are a couple of wings that are still going to be remaining just for this coming year. They aren't primarily classrooms. But even in those areas at the Essex School, where we have the half of the building that hasn't been upgraded, we do have the ability to manually control all of our dampers to bring in fresh air. So that's step one. Step two is that we've been upgrading our filters. So we're in the process of working with our engineering HVAC firm to bring in MERV 13 and 14 filters. Those are filters that are really based, you know, on having as small as possible particulate entry so they can really minimize what gets through. And that's what's being recommended by the DESC as well as by, by the CDC. So that's another step that we're taking as well. And in addition to that, we're just going to be running the system a lot more so that we can start before the school day and continue after the day. Whereas in the old days, people were very energy-conscious and worried about not overrunning the system. At this point, our primary focus is not worrying about that and just keeping the system running so that we can be flushing the building immediately after the school day, after people are gone, continuing to circulate, pull out used air and bring in fresh, and do the same before the day starts. We're also doing some other steps that are important, like cleaning out all of the mechanical systems. A contracted services company that'll be helping us to do that over the summer. And because we have engineering professionals who've been working with us on the Memorial School project, it happens to be the same group that worked with us on the high school project, GGD. We're working with them. And they've already been giving us advice, and they're going to be in our buildings to continue to talk to us about exactly how to fine-tune and calibrate our building automation system. So we're going through a lot of different steps. I think the bottom line is this is something that we can manage to be in line with the guidance. And we're in a lot better shape than other districts that may have older buildings. But it's something we're going to be watching very carefully. So that's the kind of high level. I don't know, Jason, if there's anything you want to add based on what you're seeing.
Avi, it's Annie. You talked about our new buildings, but what about Essex Elementary? I'm sorry if I didn't hear that.
Yeah, that's okay. Can you hear me? Can you hear me okay? Yeah, good. So for Essex Elementary, we talked about the fact that we did an upgrade of the building automation system, putting digital controls for a large portion of the building, not the entire building, back in fiscal '18 and '19 through a partnership with the Town of Essex through a Green Communities Grant program that gives us that control for the areas where we haven't done that. We have the ability to do manual operation of the dampers to bring in fresh air. So we have the capabilities in all sections. We have modern technology and a much larger percentage of the building than we had even two to three years ago, so that's great. And then some other things, I should mention here in addition to Jason, who's not on the phone here, Stephen Hunt, who's been our maintenance technician and supervisor for many years. And he, this is a guy who has dived super-deep into understanding our systems. And so before we were dealing with COVID, one of the things that's been great is that he's really brought in-house a lot of the first-line knowledge of the ins and outs of how our HVAC systems work. So when he and Jason got to work at looking at the guidance and how we can improve things, we really do have a lot of great in-house expertise on our team, and so we're really thankful for that. And I'll hand it over to Jason, but I just have to say that the team of Stephen and Jason really gave us a lift up when combined with the technology improvements that we've made over the past couple of years.
Yes, thank you. I hate, everyone, it's Jason. You know, so Avi, thank you for the kind words. And again, thank you for the kind words about Steve. You know, Steve is our maintenance supervisor. He is, you know, many of the teachers that are on this call, you know, know Steve, respect Steve. Everyone knows kind of the work ethic and the dedication that he has for the district. You know, this summer, he's really gone above and beyond, you know, and especially since these new guidelines came out. So I'm very grateful to him. As Avi mentioned, you know, we're bringing in an HVAC engineer in GGD. As Avi said, you know, they worked on the new Memorial School. They worked on the high school, middle school. So they're actually coming in tomorrow, and Steve and I will be meeting with them. You know, we'll be going through blueprints of the entire building. We'll be going through the BAS systems. We'll be going inside classrooms. We'll be going in HVAC, mechanical rooms, air-hailing units. So we'll be doing an in-depth look at all the schools, all the classes, just to ensure that we are meeting all of these guidelines. You know, we have a lot of questions for GGD. You know, for example, on, you know, should we be opening windows? Should we be opening doors? You know, these are a lot of things that will kind of come from our meeting. And certainly, we hope to have results in the next few weeks. So, you know, we're doing a lot now, and we'll continue to do so to make sure that we're meeting the guidelines and to make sure that all of our school buildings are safe for the students, faculty, and staff.
I have a couple of questions, if that's okay?
This is Matt Harrington. Can you guys hear me? Sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry, thanks. Are you guys shooting? A few questions, I guess I'll say them all, and you can answer in turn. Are you guys shooting for 100% fresh air? Do you have a percentage that you're targeting? Question one. Question two is, obviously, summer months, it's a little bit easier to go from, you know, 80 down to 68 for cooling with non-recycled air. But in the winter months, going from 10 to 68 is much more difficult without recycled air. So have you guys thought through that process yet? Those are my two main ones.
Yeah, so those are two great questions. And again, a lot of it will be determined by our meeting with GGD. To say kind of 100% fresh air, you know, the guidelines say kind of bring in as much fresh air as possible and eliminate the return air over the cycle there. You know, 100% air may be possible in some units, but you really don't want to go above the recommended, you know, past the design settings for the outside air. So again, you know, that's something that we are looking into is, you know, are you allowed to bring in, you know, 100% fresh air? And also, again, a great point about the winter, which is certainly a concern for us. You know, going back a couple of weeks, you know, in mid-September, that's certainly helpful because it's not going to be, you know, as hot. But, you know, in an AC system, if you're bringing in 90-degree air, that's going to be very difficult to make that room 68, as you mentioned. You know, October, it's going to be a little easier because the temperature outside is about 70 degrees. You know, once we get to those cooler seasons, it's going to be 20, 30 degrees out. And, you know, how are we able to bring in as much fresh air as possible while keeping the students and faculty, you know, warm, right? So those are probably, that's probably the biggest question that I have. And again, I, once we kind of come up with a solution, we'll be happy to share it with everyone.
Thank you. And just one last question. Sorry. Have you guys considered, or have looked into, like ionization or UV for the?
Yep, yep. So again, we've looked, we are going to be looking into an ionization plan. But, you know, again, we can't really fully develop a plan until we until we bring in our engineers and we go through the system top to bottom. So that's what we're doing first. And from there, they'll make recommendations for us. And again, we'll do, again, whatever we can for those recommendations. But that's something that we may have to consider. Yes.
Thank you.
I think the only thing I would add to that, from what I understand about some of those additional technologies like ionization, they're really designed to supplement where an HVAC system can't do something to start with. And so, for example, they might be used in a school where they may not have more modern HVAC technology. So I think that's why, starting with Jason's conversations with our design engineers at GGD, that's where I think we have to see, what can we do with what we have first? And if we have any areas where we want to, we feel like we need to do more, we're going to do that. So, but I think we're starting from a good place.
That was a whole bunch of technical stuff that I didn't really understand, but I'm glad that you guys are all on it. Sounds good. Any other questions for Avi and Jason? All right, Pam? Anyone else have comments or questions? All right, school committee, are we ready to wrap it up? Motion to adjourn?
No, wait. Aren't we talking about transportation and financial implications?
Yes.
Oh, we have lots more.
Oh, let's keep going. Sorry.
Pam, do you want me to just jump right into transportation? Or is there anything you want to say before we get there?
I feel like maybe Pam is...
I think Pam might have lost connection.
She might be talking muted, but I'd be happy to just...
Yeah, why don't you just keep going, Avi? I think that sounds good.
Especially given the time. I think the basic thing to start with on transportation is that if you look at the DEFC guidance, which just came out recently, it actually shows diagrams of buses and how students can be kept at safe distances. But those distances are all based off of three feet. So at three feet of distance, the DEFC guidance is talking about essentially bringing down capacity to about 24 kids on a bus combined. Not all buses have been sized, but that's a pretty good number. That's about 50% capacity. And so that might mean, in theory, you need twice as many buses. Obviously, as we all know, we're talking about sticking with the six-foot guideline. At six feet, you bring that number down by another half. So you're talking about potentially 12 students on a bus leaving a space for a monitor, which we've talked about as being something that's in the guidance as a good option to consider for helping kids to stay in their assigned seats as well as keeping their mask on. So when you start bringing our potential capacity down by 50% at three feet or even 25% at six feet, which is really the standard that we're working towards, you're obviously talking about whether we're going to need two to four times as many buses. And so those are some of the numbers that we've been talking about in prior conversations when we've been giving some high-level estimates. What could happen to our cost structure in terms of trying to respond to COVID? So one of the issues that we talked about in the policy subcommittee where we were talking about transportation is just the fact that, as you may remember from, you know, prior to New Year's budget conversations about transportation, there aren't a lot of bus transportation providers out there in the market. And it is more the rule than the exception that most areas have one school transportation provider. And we've had one company bid on our business for the past few contracts and saw their transportation for regular education, daily transportation. And we've also talked about the fact that there's been a major driver shortage and how a lot of districts are not able to have drivers. And so in speaking with Salford, they have confirmed that at this point, they don't have extra buses and extra drivers. If they wanted to get an extra bus and wanted to pay for it, maybe they could do that. It would take a few months to roll in. But it doesn't mean they could provide an extra driver. We've even asked them about whether we could get on a waitlist for any districts that go fully remote. And they said maybe, but if they go back, we can guarantee them. So they're really, at this point, the only way to provide additional capacity would be to provide what's known as additional tiers, which right now, we have the first tier of service every morning is our high school run. Those same drivers and same buses then go and pick up the elementary school kids. And so we would need to add another level with those same drivers and buses right after that. So that's one issue that obviously, that means that kids might be arriving at a different time, which is really not what we want for transportation. So those are some of the challenges. Obviously, if you move into a hybrid scenario, you're talking potentially about half of the kids on a daily basis. So that helps bring you back in the other direction. We don't know what will happen with demand, whether families will say they feel a little differently about putting their kids on the bus or not. That's something we're hoping to find out. We did have a transportation survey that did ask some of those questions. And we're, you know, ready to open our registration as well to get harder numbers. But the last piece of the puzzle is the fact that, as you may remember from a couple of years ago, we talked about, in the context of bus fees, that we're currently charging bus fees only for students who are riding less than a mile and a half. And for the Department of Education, state law really, requires us to provide transportation for two miles and above. We charge fees for one and a half miles and less because we get reimbursement for one and a half miles. But that's all optional. And whereas most school districts only have to provide up to sixth grade, regional school districts, because of the notion that many cover a larger geographic area, they have to provide a K-12. But again, two miles and above. And so we have an existing school committee policy that offers a service down to a mile. As I mentioned, we've been charging fees for less than a mile and a half. So one of the questions we need to ask is whether or not we feel like that optional bus service, which is so important, and we've heard many times from our community members, that they rely on it for getting their kids to the bus to school, especially, you know, families where there isn't a parent who is available because of work schedules to drive a student to school, that the bus is so important. But would we have to look at a model of either just adding more tiered service and maybe kids arriving later or potentially changing our rules about what we offer service for? So those are some of the things we need to look into. We're going to use the survey data to get more information about how many families are telling us qualitatively in the survey, they are relying on transportation over and above what we already know. But obviously, it's a new environment. It's worth asking again in light of COVID. And then at some point, open a registration, hopefully within the next week or two, to be able to get some hard and fast numbers there. At which point, we're going to have to work with the policy subcommittee to see how we want to tackle this issue and whether we want to stick with the guidelines we have or make a change. So those are some of the basic considerations that we're going through. That's kind of an update at this point. And we've talked about the numbers, that it could be anywhere from $200,000 up to $400,000 plus potentially an extra $100,000 for monitors. So these are very costly items that we're looking at to be able to get kids to school.
Annie?
Hi, I have a number of questions for you, Avi. You ready?
All right.
So right now, we have a budget line item of what for transportation and what is the potential increase in transportation for the hybrid model that Joanne, that we've mapped out for all three schools.
We've been talking about numbers of, I think if I look at Pam's most recent chart, $200,000 for transportation in the hybrid model and $100,000 for bus monitors. You know, originally, we were talking about numbers of up to $400,000. But again, with the hybrid, it brings you down to 50% students. And one of the big things that's out is, we let people register, many of whom didn't always ride, which is what we have to do. But by going through the registration process and really, we're going to get a better sense of who's really supplying our transportation for this year.
Okay. I think transportation is an equity issue, so I want to be mindful of that when we talk about it at the policy level. So I have a question about the contracts, right? So right now, we are poised to possibly go hybrid. And this is not just about transportation, but it's about every contractual service that we contract. So can you tell me what obligations we have? So if we decide to go with a hybrid model and we plan for all this transportation or we plan to have cafeteria services or we plan for intense custodial services, can you tell me, you're giving away my good answer. Can you tell me what our obligations are if we start hybrid and then three weeks in, we've had so many like stits and starts that we're going fully remote? What's our obligation to those contracted services that we have engaged?
Yeah, I mean, I will say, you know, a lot of districts have different opinions about outsourced services. We try to do what we can to keep core services in-house. But we have certain areas like transportation and custodial where we do, and food service where we do have a managed outsourced contract and providing a lot of flexibility. And I think, you know, a lot of people will say it's not always about the financial savings that you get from outsourcing, but it's about the flexibility. So to your point with transportation, we can add an extra tier of service. We would not be under an obligation to keep that for the entire year. So we could start that. We could stop that. Similarly, we haven't talked about it tonight, but on prior evenings, we have talked about the fact that we've added additional custodial hours just for standardization. Have people come in and just, you know, be walking around, making sure they're sanitizing high-touch areas, which we were doing in a few days when COVID news was starting to bubble up in March before we closed. But clearly, it's going to be part of any opening plan that we have. And similarly there, those are added services. We are not going, we're not prepared to make a long-term commitment to those. But we are working with companies that can provide what we need when we need it. So we have a lot of flexibility. And that works.
Okay. So they can increase and decrease as necessary? And the costs are, costs for services, they're not a contracted flat fee?
Yeah, we would not be contracting for a full year, but we would be telling them to have someone ready for a full year. I mean, if you look at transportation as an example, they're the same drivers. They want to have more runs per day. And most of the bus companies tend to give those drivers extra work and extra hours by using things like after-school transportation, field trips, athletics, et cetera. So for them to get more service, that's kind of good news on top, but it would not require us to make a contract to, no matter what happens, if our model should change.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just offer?
Sorry, can I take one more question?
The only consideration I would offer is we could find ourselves in a similar position to last spring if we're into a series of rolling shutdowns where we're open, then we close for a bit, and the intent is to reopen. But we know we may have to close again because the theory of the case in the spring as to why to continue your contracts was because you didn't want to be left without a resource should there be a reopen or as you went into the fall. So my caution is that, yes, I think we can renegotiate or stop payment on contracts. But if it's going to be an open-close nature and it's going to be inconsistent, then I think we'll have to look at the strategy of whether or not that is going to leave us short when we look to open again if we have to close.
So what's our timeline on it? Yeah. And so can you give us a sense of when you need to secure these services? And because I would like to have a full conversation about that and what that looks like because I think that, you know, at least Shannon and I, in talking with the two towns, they're going to want to know how we're managing those dollars.
I think we need to know what the model's going to be before we can lock in on costs.
That's fair.
I have a thought about busing, and it's not really a question. In the guidance that came out from the state, it said that we should actively be encouraging parents not to use the buses. However, we have to be concerned about people and cross-contaminating in their pods, et cetera. So it's hard. Like, of course, if we are open in a hybrid, of course, we want to be able to provide transportation to those we need it while also encouraging other people, the exact opposite of what we usually encourage them to do because we usually want people to carpool and take the bus because it's good for the environment. But now we'd like, actually, it would be much more fiscally responsible and practical if everybody would just drive their own children to school every single day. So it's just a very complicated issue with these buses.
I think transportation is in general, you know, not to keep piling on to all of the technical analysis that needs to be done. But what we know particularly about Lincoln Street is the higher volume of cars, the more difficult that morning drop-off is, the longer it's going to take and the more impact on the community. So I think we're just going to need to be prepared to plan out and kind of think through the implications of the traffic patterns on Lincoln Street as we are certainly looking at increased volume and a longer staggered start time. So it's not anything that we can't puzzle through. We will. It's just one more consideration. So I think in addition to transportation, I think Avi has been just raising the concern that we need to attend to the budget and just be aware of what we're spending as we put this project together, as we put the hybrid model together. So he has a far more detailed analysis that he is running. I'm keeping kind of the back of the envelope budget with my attention is, he's been following the technology costs much more closely than I have just in the day-to-day approval of POs. And I'm highly attuned to the staffing conversations that are going on in the implication of cost there because I do think that's going to be something that we're not going to have grant money to take care of, where we will get some reimbursements around technology. And it's really kind of the linchpin of making the hybrid model work because if we have people in the building, we have to have the appropriate level of staff to be there. So if you just kind of round up, round off the numbers... So if you just kind of round up, round off the numbers based on what principals are talking about in terms of running their building, you can get a sense on this slide of where we are with anticipated staffing costs. I know Joanne referenced the replacement staff leaves and subs. This doesn't really account for daily subs, but we're, we're assuming up to 20% teaching staff leave. So, and I'm zeroing in on the, the core courses here. That could run us about $300,000 just in FMLA leaves alone if they are entitled. If they aren't entitled to a leave, if it's just a, if it's just a need not to be working because of some type of tangential reason related to COVID and they would opt for an unpaid leave, we would have no cost there, but we would still need to bring in a new person. And my concern beyond the rising cost of personnel is also the available, availability of personnel to do the jobs. Just have to be full disclosure, we are going to go out, we're going to try to hire. As people put in, we're just not, I'm just not certain what the actual market is right now and the availability for people willing to change jobs in this environment or teach in person. And that is a qualifying question everyone has been asking as we are conducting interviews, that people are willing and able to work in person if they join the district. So Avi, please feel free to comment. I know you have been watching the numbers. And right now our operating assumption is that we would be using some level of reserves to pay for this, which of course quickly depletes the reserves and probably positions us for an override sooner rather than later because reserves are in the mix for our operating budget. But Avi, please give us your professional analysis.
Sorry, I'm unmuting myself. I mean, I just think there's no two ways about it. I'm definitely concerned about the pace of dollars that we need to invest. Obviously, we're making these changes happen when we need to make decisions, we're making, we're doing that. We don't want to let cost keep us from adhering, obviously with the guidance and also trying to be ready for our community. And, you know, with reserve funds, as everyone knows, they call them rainy day funds. And clearly this is, you know, even before COVID started to happen, just, well, before with the reopening planning started to happen, you're talking about the emergency nature of the economy, these are the times when you typically want to do so. We are using them in our operating budget. We did adjust for state aid by not cutting our core program as much as looking for operating savings. So we're already on the hook with reserve usage. And these numbers that you have on the screen here, they're significant. And I think we do have to be mindful of what our multi-year plan is. I think when you look at, you know, the last school committee meeting, we had the auditors here, we were talking about the SMP upgrade. You know, those things are really, we don't need those to feel good. We are using those credit ratings to A, keep costs to taxpayers down, B, make sure we're being fiscally responsible. But most importantly, which really should be A, is making sure we can provide services to our students, but that has to be in a sustainable manner. And we've been doing a lot to look at multi-year planning. And so I think we need to do what we can to calibrate the flow of dollars that we're seeing on the screens that could be one-time in usage and for an undetermined amount of time against some of the multi-year needs that we have as a school system. So I would say that the funding strategy, well, nobody wants to sound like, myself included, that we're cutting costs in a way that would put anyone at risk. I guarantee you, we will not do that. We do have to have a game plan that not only plans for what's going to happen in September, but where we're going to be on a multi-year basis. That's what we've been doing for several years in a row. And I think we need to continue to have those conversations.
Pam and Avi?
Yep.
As we look at this slide, can you talk to us a little bit about why there are two line items? What is the nature of the expenditures in each and how much, you know, ballpark? I'm not expecting specifics. How much of that is one-time expenditures? And then I have some follow-up questions.
Well, I mean, just going down the line, PPE, those are for point in time. Assuming that COVID resolves at some point, no one knows when.
Sorry, I just meant the technology one.
Oh, technology? Technology is a great example of where the investment now will pay dividends for a long time. And so that is multi-year at benefit. The only, I think, flag that I would bring to everyone's attention is that we have been over the years working to have multi-year planning for technology so that when we buy something, three to five years later, depending on what it is, when it runs out, we don't say, we don't have any budget for this. So instead, we've been looking, you know, smoothing out our costs through a couple of different ways. One, staggering when we order things, but two, also sometimes using leasing, which carries a slight interest cost, but also helps to build in the budgetary discipline to say that whatever we get, we've had a multi-year plan and we're not going to come back three to five years from now and say, you know, your guess is as good as mine. That to us has not been the right way to plan. And so we've done a lot there. But right now, we've got to get, you know, obviously technology in the hands of every student and all the faculty to make sure that they can deliver on it with a complete shift in how education's delivered. So these are things that we're going to keep for a couple of years, but we do not have a multi-year plan to a replacement of this technology currently in place. And that is something we're going to have to work out. And as Pam was saying, the numbers here, I think, are already going to be north of $250,000 by a decent bit.
And there's only one line for technology, Annie. It's just the $250.
Subtotal.
The other one is the subtotal of the first three lines.
Okay, great.
My mistake is I should have transportation above, because I have, I was trying to carry staffing below that, so.
Okay, so we heard this week that Chapter 70 is going to be level funded. Is that true? And how much of that, like where are we going to allocate those dollars, right? We, we reduced our budget, right? For a 10% drop. So can we talk a little bit about that?
But yes, the good news about that is if that is recurring revenue, if it sticks and if it holds, it is very good news. The, what I've heard is that it is based off of a partial year budget. There is no full year budget at the state level. And so I think one of the things that remains to be seen, you know, we've kind of, I would say, had a win for the first three months of the fiscal year, which is great, but excuse me, that brings you to basically September before we're kind of back at this again. And I don't know if Pam has more up-to-date information from some of her conversations with any of the legislative work that's going on. So that is good news. It will be recurring. I think that can reduce some of the pressure. I would want to see that getting directed to some of the more recurring costs that we have in our model. So that is one thing that might help us to some extent. I think the bottom, the other thing to remember though is that from a grant funding standpoint, in terms of CARES Act money that is coming to a lot of districts, you know, just like with Chapter 70, due to the demographics in our two communities, we don't tend to be very high on the list of what gets sold out. And a lot of the money does tend to go more to the urban districts for understandable reasons. So that means that, you know, between grant reimbursement that you have at the bottom of this chart and also state aid, it typically is not always going to be what we need to cover all of our operating expenses. Pam, do you have anything based on what you have been hearing in the superintendent's group that you want to add?
No, it's been, no, it's been very quiet about the budget. I've started to raise what we're starting to see here locally to see if anyone's tuned into it. I think our planning process is a little, we're a little bit more into the details than I, some of our, at least the folks that I've been talking to are in terms of pricing things out or getting into where the kids are actually going to fall in the cohorts at this point. But this is a concern I raised on a couple of state conversations. In terms of the statewide budget discussion, it's been crickets. You know, it was the topic of the day through June, but I think once the town meetings were underway and they locked into the 112, there's been very little discussion or information coming through other than the notice that they were very proud of themselves that we are, we are locked in through October, but we're basically locked in at last year's number. So knowing is better than not knowing, but it's not necessarily a tremendous boon. I'm sorry, sorry, Sarah.
Teresa has, has been waiting to ask a question.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. I'm being so polite. Look at me. Avi, I just have a question that I want to clarify on this screen here with just stepping back to transportation based on our conversation in the policy subcommittee. So that $200,000 is based on the state's three-foot recommendation, right?
Sorry, I'm muting myself again. So it's not just that, it's that somewhere between, I'm under the assumption based on the last school committee that we need to work towards six feet. However, the state does have three feet guidance. That's something that I certainly would take the direction of the school committee about. But it's also based on the fact that, based on a hybrid model, that offsets, that move from three to six, if you have half the students, and then also the fact that we might need to look at what our distance guidelines are. So based on the distance, those numbers could go up if we leave everything the same. I know as Annie mentioned, it certainly is an equity issue that we know is important. But generally, you know, where we see the biggest needs are for kids who need to travel along distances and those are mandated and those are things that we would have regardless.
And does that account for, for out-of-district transportation or special needs transportation costs as well?
No, it doesn't. And I'm glad you mentioned that. That happened separately through a separate line item. And I guess, I guess what I would say is those conversations, just like Pam mentioned, that a lot of the conversations we're having, in some cases were further along than where some of the other folks we're talking to are. And I would say the same is true with a lot of the, with a lot of the out-of-district transportation programs that are still trying to understand exactly how they're going to implement this, but there could be additional costs for that as well, no question.
Thanks so much.
May I ask a question? I actually have two. At the bottom, I think for pulling all together and putting all these numbers together. At the bottom you have grant and FEMA reimbursement approximately 500 grand. How tight is that? I mean, is that a definite or are we kind of guessing at that number?
Probably will go up with some other grants, but go ahead, Avi.
Yeah, so what I have seen is the DEFC is kind of rolling out the CARES Act funding in waves. Can you hear me okay? Great. And so, you know, they started out with the first grant, which is the ESSER grant, where they said, oh, you're going to get about 80% of your Title I funding, which for us is not very significant at all. That was about $53,000. And we were thinking to ourselves, okay, this is a problem. And then they came out with another waiver grant, which was the return to school grant, about $225 per pupil. That's about $300,000 on top of it. So you're up to about $350,000 there. The FEMA assumption is that they're talking about reimbursing 75%, but that's only for things that are considered emergency response. And so PPE, great example. We're hoping to get the full 75% there. You know, in our past work with FEMA, it's been pretty supportive. Once they get the money, they try to help here. It does not cover things like remote learning technology as an example. So that's an area where we would not see support from them. So depending on where the PPE numbers end up and the FEMA reimbursables, that's where that 350 that we know already we might get could bump up to five, even as high as maybe even $700,000, depending on how big our PPE is. But just remember, the grants go up if our costs go up and we retain that 20% exposure. There is some conversation about whether there will be some support of back-to-school technology, of remote learning technology grant that's kind of in play and we're waiting to see how that unfolds. So that might help. What we've heard preliminarily on the call many weeks ago was that we should expect that to be about a percentage of costs that's similar to how Chapter 70 is funded, which is about 20% of our exposure. So that's what they said. We don't know how that's going to end up here.
Okay, thank you. It's still kind of throwing darts. My other question is that 1.774 number for hybrid, that assumes hybrid in all buildings, correct?
Yes.
Okay. What if we were to go just hybrid in the elementary? What, do we know what that would look like?
I think we'd have to work it a little bit to give you a real number.
Okay. Would we, would a likely?
You could probably, possibly, yeah, half the, at least half the staffing costs.
All right.
I don't think we know where we're going to land on transportation, so I don't know if we should just hold it until we know with greater certainty. But I think we can.
Oh, sorry, Pam. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I thought you were bothering me. One thing I would say for transportation is that really the bulk of our transport, I think at the elementary school, we would be somewhat closer to the guidelines if we had a hybrid model. At the middle high school, we have large numbers of kids. It tapers off a little bit as you get to the upper grades where kids start to drive. But that's really where the transportation is going to be tight based on the registration numbers that we've seen in the past. Again, as Pam said, and I agree, it's, it's still kind of early to see.
Okay, thank you.
This is Ken.
I also feel, all I was, I'm sorry, Ken, all I was going to add too is we're still going through the process, so I don't know that if we've unearthed all of the potential costs yet. So we can certainly work a number if it's half, like half a hybrid, but it could go up from there as well. Ken, go ahead. I'm sorry, I was just thinking out loud.
No, thank you. Thank you. I was just, I was going to say, I just wanted to call, just put out a call after three-plus hours on this. There's a tradition I learned earlier on a school committee about rabbit hole and it feels like we've fallen into a really big one. This is really good information and I'm glad we're into this level of detail, but I think we've got over 100 people still on the line. Teachers, staff, that I know in this agenda, we've covered transportation pretty thoroughly. I guess, can we go back to the agenda, Sarah, and try and wrap this up to where we stand and where we're headed to?
Yeah, Pam and Avi, are you guys all set with your thoughts on transportation and finance, et cetera? Oh, Pam's going to wrap it up with the timeline. Awesome.
I'm ready to wrap it up, but we also need one vote from you before we leave. So yes, the whole point in bringing up the finances, it's really just to make note of the fact that it exists. The bill seems to be increasing and we have a responsibility to let you know that, you know, cost-effectiveness of the program is something we typically consider, so that's why we've put it out there. I think we need to try to make decisions in the best interest of the students. But I think we could argue that there's the best interest in the moment and then there's the best interest over time. So that's just there for your consideration. What we do need a vote from you tonight on is to amend the school calendar. So I think on my very first slide, I noted that the school start date for students should be pushed back to September 16th to coordinate with the statewide mandate that there should be 10 days for training teachers at the beginning of the school year. So I don't know if the state mandate trumps the local vote, but if we could just make it official with school committee that we are accepting that and put that change to the calendar, I can notify families that our first day for students will be September 16th, although pending will be the type of model that they're starting in.
So moves Warnock.
Second, Whitman.
Hi, Erin.
Yes.
Annie. Annie?
Sorry.
Yes. Matt?
Yes.
I think that was a yes.
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
And you forgot me.
Oh, sorry. I thought you were the, yeah, Shannon.
I just had a quick question, what that does to the number of days? Aren't we shrinking the 180 days?
180 goes to 170 by, that's what the state has, that's what the commissioner has determined, that the school year will be 170 days with the first 10 days of this school year dedicated to staff training. So the staff reports on its first day, they will still be working 184 days by contract, but they reduce the student year by 10 days to provide for like 10 universal days. but they reduce the student year by 10 days to provide for, like, 10 universal days statewide.
Okay, Erdman, yes, thank you.
Right, motion carries, right?
Yes.
Yes.
And just to close out, and we will, we will shut this down by 9:30. On the screen is the timeline. For those on the phone, I think, I can't even remember now if I've said it in the course of this meeting or at some other point today. But we have put in for an extension at the state level so that our plan will not be due on August 10th, but will time out with our next full school committee meeting on August 18th. We are not alone in asking for that extension. I think some of our neighbors are doing the same. Next week, we're going to continue to develop the plan. It's going to start to include the hybrid structure, so the schedule, the cohort assignments, and the plan for that. Each principal has been drafting up their health and safety protocol, so a handbook of what it will look like in the school building. Everything from drop-off to how to get to class, to what lunch will look like, and how to use the bathrooms. We're going to work with our DPH folks to, and the advisory group, to look at that COVID identification response. I know that Aaron's been collecting some samples from some other towns and really understanding the guidance that's been given to us. And then we just need to continue the staffing assessment, because I do think that's the linchpin holding this all together. And we'll start to put some more detail to that remote plan outline. I think you've heard a little bit about that tonight. So we are on course. We can add a school committee meeting on August 13th. I think we also talked about August 11th potentially. So stay tuned for that. We can, I will speak with Sarah and Shannon post-meeting to see when we want to put that in place. And then we're going to be looking to, we have to have a final determination by August 18th. That will put us a month away from opening day for students. And I think it times out with mid-August, which is what I've anticipated pretty much from the get-go on this. But I do think it's going to benefit everybody for us to come to a final decision on how we want to open the year. I think parents need time to plan, because both models on the table require, I'm sure, a lot of organization on the home front. And I know the same is true for the staff in terms of thinking about how to prepare for the year and also preparing their homes as well. And everybody, everybody on the staff is going to be subject to whatever their town decides for their kids. So I think that's going to be a new layer of this, once decisions start rolling in. And that's about it. And I just put a few thoughts together in what I think, walking away from tonight, you've been given an information dump. So as you consider what to choose, I think health and safety of students and staff need to be first. What does, what model is in the best interest of students? What's implementable and sustainable? And I think the piece that we don't discuss a lot, but any changes in either model constitute a change in working conditions. Aaron, are a subject of collective bargaining. So we have to come to terms with the Teachers Association on what our expectations are and what the ground rules will be for the new model. So with that, I think I am done for the night.
Wait, Pam, I'm sorry, I have one thing. Can you go back to the schedule slide for one second? We talked about August 13th, which is next Tuesday.
Thursday.
Thursday, having a second school committee meeting. And the other thing we talked about was having a similar presentation to what we had tonight, but for the elementary schools.
Yeah.
So people should just maybe be on the lookout for if we can schedule that in?
Yes, and this kind of goes back, this is one iteration before what we talked about today. So I would recommend that we put the school committee meeting on Tuesday night, like it typically is, and have those elementary presentations in that time slot.
This is Annie. I want to make sure that we are responsive to what you need from us to make decisions. Because I feel like, you know, you probably understand where I'm coming from. I feel like the hybrid is just a big mess. And I feel like I would much rather have you guys focusing on how to deliver remote well. And I feel like hybrid is just cluster. So I would like to make a decision sooner rather than later and so that we can get on with the work we need to do. So tell us what you need from us, and we should.
So if you're asking me, the saving grace is that remote is a component of both models. So remote is being built because hybrid is remote with an in-school component to it. I think it's an important decision, and I want to make sure you have the information necessary to get there. But I don't think we can stretch it out past August 18th. So we're going through, we've been going through feasibility at each level, digging down at each iteration. I think it's working for us to surface the issues, especially to turn this thing into, to operationalize the model. But if it's not giving you what you need to make your decision, then you need to let us know what those things are.
I have plenty, but I think other people need more. So I just want to make sure that we are meeting your needs in terms of meeting as a school committee to get these decisions made so that we can get not just the school folks online, but parents and everybody ready to go. So I would love to meet on the 10th, and I'm available.
The 11th.
The 11th.
Tuesday, August 11th.
I'm not going anywhere that night either.
I agree with that, and I would really love to see an elementary presentation the way that middle and high school did tonight. I think that that was incredibly helpful. And I think parents need to see what it is they're actually going to be looking at at the elementary level, especially when we say things that the program's not impacted in the same way it is at the secondary level, that we need to see, paint the picture of what elementary looks like in a hybrid model, and I'm in support of the meeting.
Teresa, I agree with you on that. One of the things, I guess, in terms of painting the picture, just even as a parent and as a school committee member, having absorbed some of this a couple of times, it's very much saturation. I'd like the middle and the high school models, but I think we've got to work on getting our paintings a little more structured if we're going to share. And there's going to be a lot of information coming at us, coming at us and a lot of decisions being made, but I think we still, if you keep it digestible, so that what the parents can understand. So rather than kind of saying, let's do a big pile of data sooner, you know, and spend more time on it, I guess, I'm deferring to the Pam and the administration on, you know, following the process there, I know, and just following what others in Massachusetts and what DESE is giving for guidance. Because ultimately, all of this, one of my kind of closing comments is what we have tonight, somehow or another, we need to summarize it for, or be able to communicate that, as Joanne Mano said earlier, to the other 2,500 people that are on the mailing list and not on the call tonight. So that way, we've got a lot of communicating to do over the next month plus. And I suspect the two-week delay, things are going to probably roll slower, because we have all the safety plans and a lot of the, there's a lot of activities going on right now.
I think if the presentation next week is like the presentation tonight, I think that's information that we all need to have, and the financial implications and the implications of the program and the implications to daily life. So I think that's something we need to see and hear about next week. And I'm looking forward to that, because I need to hear that.
I guess the only thing I would ask, because, you know, I didn't take very much time tonight, and I should. The team has been working full-tilt on this since March, really. And in the past weeks, it has been extremely long days, running to catch up to the guidance that comes out. And we would love to not be beholden to the guidance, but the guidance on medical and safety is not negotiable. We have to meet those standards from the Department of Ed. We are a public school, even though we are our own unique entity. So I guess I would just say, if you are feeling, as a committee, very strongly that the hybrid is not something that you are going to support, there's an incredible amount of detailed paperwork and writing and planning and meeting that has to be done to get to this next level of plan development. So if you're truly still deliberating, we will absolutely have that for you in a way that you can digest and use to make your decision. If it's not going to sway you one way or the other, and you're locked in on remote, please tell us that now, because we can put our energies elsewhere. And I think that's the question that Annie put out there. If you're looking at it at one level and not another, you know, I've heard a couple of different things. So that's all I would ask. If there's a strong feeling in any one direction that will lighten the load a little bit, that would be helpful.
I think that we need to talk about what that hybrid looks like at the elementary level, because, you know, you said a great majority of parents would like to return to school.
They would, yeah.
Have kids return to school. Well, we painted the picture for the two secondary schools. Now we need to paint that picture for the elementary school.
Absolutely. We can do that.
Yeah, so I need that. I need to see that too, and I think that's important for all the parents who want that, to understand what it is they want.
Okay.
And what's possible to be delivered.
So let's plan on that for August 11th.
Sounds good, everybody. Thank you all so much for all of your hard work. Everyone who spoke at the meeting tonight, all of the people who called in and listened, all of the people who gave their public comment and have been emailing and sharing their thoughts with us all along. It's really important for us to hear from everybody. So we really do appreciate all of your feedback, and it's important. And it's late, so I think we're ready to wrap it up. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved, Warnock. Second to Shannon.
Cameron, yes.
We're supposed to do this by roll call, so Eric? Annie?
Yeah.
Shannon?
Yep, I moved it.
Yeah, okay, Matt?
Yes.
Teresa? I think, hold on a second. And I'm, yeah.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night.
Meeting adjourned.